Good morning, everyone. We're going to call a meeting of the Board of Supervisors and the Redevelopment Authority to order. Today is Thursday, June 6, 2019. It is just 8:30 AM. We're in the community center at Sierra Room at 851 East Williams Street in Carson City, Nevada. We're also streaming on the Internet and on the Government Access Channel if you have Charter Cable. Also, as we call a meeting to order today, we should remember that 75 years ago was the invasion of Normandy with D-Day. We should all be thinking about what that means to our safety and security for those folks who gave their lives and participated in the liberation of Europe. Also, somewhat not known today is that 77 years ago, we were in the middle of the Battle of Midway, which we won on June 7th, which happened after the Japanese invaded Pearl Harbor. And the Battle of Midway was one where we turned the tide of the war in the Pacific. So we keep those in mind. Could we have a roll call to go forward?
Supervisor Diomi?
Morning, I'm here.
Good morning. Supervisor Bonkowski?
Here.
Supervisor Bagwell?
Here.
Supervisor Barrett?
Here.
Mayor Kroll?
Here. Can we call our good friend Louis Locke from Fountainhead Foursquare? Louis, come on up. Good morning, and thank you for getting us started today.
Thank you, Mayor. Let's pray. Lord, we thank you for another beautiful day here in Carson City. And as the mayor has mentioned, our hearts remember and reflect on this commemoration of D-Day. We pray for the many families that have been affected, and we also thank you for nations free because of the sacrifice of so many, and you be with them. We pray for the supervisors, give them wisdom for their deliberation, and as always, we pray for the grace, your grace and mercy, blessings to be upon the people of Carson City and Jesus. Amen.
Thank you, Louis. Molly, could you lead... Former Supervisor Walt, would you lead us in the place today?
By allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you, Molly. All right, we're now on item number five, public comment. This is the time to comment on and discuss any topic that is relevant to or within the authority of the public body. We also take public comment where it is appropriate throughout the meeting. And also at the end, and we'll take additional public comment at the beginning and the end, and probably, I think, during where it's appropriate during the individual items at the Redevelopment Authority as well. So a lot of time for public comment. Anybody want to address the board this morning on comment? Anybody? Okay, I don't see anybody, but there'll be times if something comes to your mind and it's appropriate with the agenda. Okay, let's take up the possible action on the approval of the minutes of May 2, 2019. Everybody had a chance to look at those? Go, Brad.
I move to approve the minutes of the Carson City Board of Supervisors for May 2, 2019 as presented.
Any member of the... City Manager, any changes to the...
We need a vote.
Oh, we need a vote, I'm sorry. I'm moving too fast here. On the motion, all in favor signify by saying aye. Let me get my electronics going here. Opposed, nay. Carried, thank you, Brad. It's always nice to have people keep you within the lanes. All right, on item seven, adoption of the agenda, no changes to the agenda, City Manager?
I just have that we're pulling 15D.
What is 15D?
We'll bring that back to the next meeting.
What is that?
The loan from the General Fund and from the regional transportation funds to cover the year-end cash shortages or potential cash shortages.
All right. Any other changes?
No.
Board members, any change to the agenda? I know we've got Nancy's, City Manager's evaluation coming up at the end of the morning. If we don't have enough time, we can re... We can move that or delay it until the end of the Redevelopment Authority, so at the end, but we'll do that today. So we'll give it a shot, see how we do this morning. Okay. All right, let's now take up the consent agenda, and I have a disclosure. I don't need to pull anything off the consent agenda. Anybody, member of the public want anything pulled from the consent agenda? Board members, anything?
10B.
10B. Okay. Okay, Mike, my disclosure is this. NRS 281A.420 requires me to disclose a conflict of interest and abstain when voting when I have a disqualifying conflict. My son is the Director of Department of Conservation and Natural Resources, which employs a state engineer. On this item, 9B, the item is a routine and procedural matter required by statute. My relationship with my son is of no consequence. I make this disclosure only for full transparency, but I will be voting on this matter. Okay, on the consent agenda?
And also 10C, please.
Pardon me?
10C, too.
10C as well, thank you. Did everybody get that disclosure? Okay. All right, let's... We'll take a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of item 10B.
10C. Right. Did Brad want C?
Yeah. 10B and C.
10B and C.
I move to approve the consent agenda as published with the exception of 10B and 10C.
There's a motion and a second on the motion discussion. Everybody understand the motion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Carried, thank you. All right, now let's take up the matters that were pulled from the consent agenda. Let's take up item 10 Bravo. Who's doing this? Ms. Akers? Come on up. Matt, how are you this morning? All right. So give us the top line, whether it's budgeted or not, and then, Matt, tell us what we're doing, and we'll see where we're going, okay?
Great. Carol Akers, purchasing and contracts. This is for discussion and possible action regarding contract number 1920-002 for OnCall Geographic Information Systems Services with Michael Baker International for not to exceed amount of $130,000 for fiscal year 20 through June 30, 2020. And this item is budgeted for fiscal year 20.
Other question?
So, on this contract, I didn't see any late material posted, and it needs a fee schedule. I believe there is actually one, but technically I don't see a late material or anything, so I'll need you to... Are we adding it into Exhibit A? I need you to technically...
Yes, we did receive the rate sheet, yep, and it'll be attached to Exhibit A.
So it'll just be an extension of Exhibit A?
Yes.
Okay, with everybody? Okay. Matthew, tell us what we're doing here. Is that what we need to do?
Yeah, we needed a fee schedule to tie out the contract.
Anybody else concerns on this one? Okay, let's see what a motion does. Who wants to make a motion? Laura, you want to make a motion?
I move to approve contract number 1920-002 with an amended Exhibit A to include the fee schedule.
There's a motion and a second on the motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay. Carried, let's now take up item 10 Charlie. Same folks, all right.
Yep. Again, Carol Akers, purchasing and contracts. This is for contract 1920-005 for the OnCall GIS, Geographical Information Systems Services, with Atkins North America, Inc., and this is for not to exceed $60,000 through this fiscal year, June 30, 2020. And then this one just changed the fiscal impact since we approved the Michael Baker contract. The true available budget left after that approval is $102,400.
Okay. Supervisor Bonkowski?
Thank you, Carol. That was the addition that I was going to make and the reason I pulled it, but while we have this on the table, can we, for the benefit of the public, please explain the difference between these two GIS contracts?
Certainly. Matthew Lawton, Asset Manager. So we are very fortunate to have two very qualified consultants provide GIS services for the city. Michael Baker has primarily focused on the data maintenance for GIS for our parcel data or utility infrastructure, addressing for 911. The Atkins contract has been specifically focused on application development, stand-up mobile applications for asset management, field data collection, data schema design, database support. So those are the two distinctions between the services provided between the two consultants.
Go.
And just for the record, in case anyone out there is looking at it, while this contract says it's charged to the General Fund, it is a cost allocated account, so everyone is charged appropriately based on the service provided. So even though it just says 101, it's cost allocated. Thanks.
Any other comments or concern from the board? Public comment? Motion's in order. Supervisor Bonkowski?
I move to approve contract number 1920-005.
There's a motion and a second on the motion discussion. Hearing and seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay. Carried, okay. That concludes the consent agenda. Let's go now to the regular agenda, item 12. Carol, you're still there. Where's Zach? Morning, Zach. How are you doing? All right. Tell us what's going on in this one.
Carol Akers, purchasing and contracts. This is for discussion and possible action regarding contract 1920-006 for vehicle tires, tubes, and services with the Goodyear Tire and Rubber Company, Bridgestone Americas Tire Operations LLC, and Continental Tire, the Americas LLC, through the State of Nevada's participating addendums with NASPO value points through March 31, 2024. And this is an annual not to exceed $170,000, making the total contract amount $850,000. And it is budgeted for fiscal year 20.
It's budgeted for what?
Fiscal year 20.
Okay.
And then each year.
Zach, want to add anything?
Zach.
We're glad you're keeping an eye on tires, by the way, because, you know, some people have had some difficulty with tires, but we won't go into that.
Yes, as even put in our staff report, too, it's a good point. It is a very expensive product. We go through it quite quickly, but we do keep it under tabs between video security, our card lock and key system, as well as our electronic inventory. So what we're doing here is it's our contract to keep the city rolling on rubber. So it allows us to keep going. Cop cars, fire trucks, even some of our larger equipment at the landfill burn through these products quite quickly, but this just keeps us going. It gives us a good price value, so.
That's kind of what the hell they're saying, where the rubber meets the road?
Yes, sir.
It's its name, right here. Okay. Anybody had board questions? Anybody? Public comment? I don't see any motions in order. Supervisor Bonkowski?
I move to approve contract 1920006.
There's a motion and a second on the motion discussion. Hearing and seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay. Carried, okay. Let's now take up item 12 Bravo. This is a discussion of possible action regarding the purchase of sodium hypochlorite. That's bleach. Who's doing this? Carol, go ahead. Andy?
Yeah, this is just to approve the annual spend for fiscal year 20 for the bleach using the jointer contract through a national IPA for not to exceed $220,000, and this is budgeted for fiscal year 20.
Routine transaction or not?
Yeah, very much. We go through a lot of bleach here at the city. At the treatment plant, we use over 170,000 gallons a year of this product, so it's just kind of nature of the beast.
Okay. Board members? Don't see anything. Public comment on this issue? Anybody? I don't see any. Supervisor Bonkowski?
I move to approve contract 1920-007, subject to the renewal of the jointer contract to extend the expiration date to July 31, 2020.
There's a motion and a second by Supervisor Bagwell on the motion discussion. Hearing and seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay. Carried, okay. Let's take up item 12 Charlie. This is for the Library Cooperative. Morning, Diane. How are you? Good. Okay, go ahead, Carol.
Last one, last one. Carol Akers, purchasing and contracts.
They're budgeted, that's a big deal, so.
Yes.
Okay, keep going.
So this is for the discussion and possible action regarding contract 1918-008 for the cooperative agreement with Nevada Library Cooperative for a total not to exceed amount of $236,000 through June 30 of 2023, and also to have the interim library director sign the agreement to authorize her.
Any questions? Go, shoot.
So, this is just a little bit odd. The contract itself, the agreement is for five years. The budget money payment in here you've listed is four years.
Four years. The cooperative...
Contract's only going to... Okay, but it's a five-year plan.
Correct.
That you're agreeing to inside of the contract, okay. But the actual amounts, these are maximums, and then you'd have to come back to us if that annual amount is actually different. It's not a for sure that this is what we pay.
That's correct. These are the projected costs based on salary, projected software, and other maintenance costs. I can give you the update for fiscal 2020. The amount in the draft billing that we've seen is going to be under this amount, about $1,000. It's going to be 54, I believe, 452 is what they've projected, you know, is what we got from the draft budget.
So you're just more comfortable putting an annual max and seeing if we don't have to come back to us to approve a contract each year?
This was the max that was provided to us by the cooperative, based on their projections.
It's just not the actual money necessarily, and I just think you should know that. These are just estimated numbers for the future years, just so you know.
And yeah, what we are billed on are the actuals. It's not the projected that you're seeing here.
Okay.
Any further questions or clarification from the board? Public comment? Don't see any. We're ready for motion.
Yeah, I move to approve and authorize the library director to execute contract number 1920-008.
There's a motion and a couple seconds. On the motion, all in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay. Carried. Diane, before you leave, where are we on appointing a new library? What happened on that one? Ms. O?
I'd be glad to update you on that. At the library board's May 30 meeting, they had identified a primary and an alternate candidate in order to offer the library director job. For different, mostly personal reasons, both the primary and the alternate declined. And so although we entered a third candidate, interviewed a third candidate, there was no official action on that, so the library board has identified to do a special meeting on June 14 to decide what the next steps are to consider the third candidate, any, you know, the reviewing the current list or considering to go out for a new list.
Okay.
So that's our story.
All right, no problem. Just wanted to know if everybody knows what's going on here. Okay. Let's now take up item 13 Alpha. This is a acceptance proposed gift from William G. Palmeroy Foundation through the National Collaborative for Women's History Sites for the location of a suffrage centennial marker on Carson City property. We have Stephanie here and a whole bunch of folks here. All right.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good morning. For the record, Stephanie Hicks, Real Property Manager. For the last month or so, I've been working with Molly Walt of the Nevada Department of Administration Commission of Women in regards to the potential location of a marker for the suffrage centennial on city property or within city right-of-way. Molly does have a presentation for you this morning, so I'd like to turn it over to her.
Good morning, Molly.
Good morning, and thank you for your time this morning. To my right, sorry, I also have Jean Laird from... She's representing the League of Women Voters of Northern Nevada.
You don't know Jean at all.
Yes. So for the presentation, I'll go ahead and get started. Just so you know that the... We are collaborating with these entities. We are not the sponsor of the trail itself. So what it is, is it's a national collaborative with the Women's History Sites, and what they're trying to do is do a national votes for Women's Trail throughout the United States to celebrate the 100th anniversary of the 19th Amendment. So who they are, they are a nonprofit organization. They were created in 2001. They support and promote the preservation and interpretation of sites, locales, that bear the witness to women's participation in American life. They make women's contributions to history visible so that all women's experiences and potentials are fully valued. Now, they then became, started a project, which is the National Votes for Women's Trail. This trail, then, they're partnering with the William G. Palmeroy Foundation. The foundation then is donating 250 historical roadside markers nationally, and this trail, like I said, will go throughout the whole United States to tell the untold story of suffrage for all women of all necessities that extend well past the passage of the 19th Amendment. There are 44 state coordinators, and the one that we're working with is Dr. Joanne Goodwin. She's a professor of history at the University of Nevada, Las Vegas, so she was unable to attend today because she resides in Las Vegas, so that's why we are here today giving you this presentation. So here it is. This is what they're hoping to do, is they're hoping to preserve Nevada's suffrage and the campaign that went from 1870 to 1914. Because even though the amendment was ratified in 1920, the state of Nevada gave the right for women to vote in 1914. So the first election that women voted in was in the 1916 election, but the amendment, the 19th Amendment, wasn't ratified until 1920. And this just gives you a history of what states, when they got the right to vote. So that was just there. So what they did then is Dr. Goodwin presented all of these different locations throughout the state of Nevada of where suffragettes made a difference in the passing of the 19th Amendment. And then the foundation then chooses which ones they feel are the most relevant. So all of these different locations were presented, and then what they did is they chose the ones that you have there. Battle Mountain, Reno, Carson City, Tonopah, Pioshi, Goldfield, and Las Vegas. Now then, we just learned that Nevada will only have five, five markers. However, Carson City still isn't held one, and so we're very excited about that as well. And then I just give you a little history of where the other ones and why they were chosen. So the Southern Pacific RR and the Capital Hotel in Battle Mountain is where we're hoping to get a marker. We're hoping to get a marker also in Battle Mountain in Landry County here as well. In Reno, they're looking at the house in which Ann Martin was born and lived as well. That's one of the locations, and it just goes on to tell you why as well. Tonopah is where we're hoping to get another one as well. Marjorie Brown was very influential on the passing of the vote as well. And then in Goldfield, Bird Mae Wilson was very influential. And then Las Vegas is looking at possibly two, two different locations where they'll have two different markers as well. And then we go ahead and get into Carson City. And the reason for the one in Carson City, the suffragette that will be highlighted, her marker will be Felice Cohen. She was born in Carson City, she was a lawyer, and she was also the co-founder of the Nevada Equal Franchise Society. And that's the best picture that I could find, and it's amazing that she did so much, but you cannot find a picture of her. It's, I don't know why.
Actually, I have a small picture of her.
See, I should have went to you. I should have. So why is she so influential on this is one. First and foremost, she wrote the Nevada's Suffrage Bill that was approved by the legislature in 1911 and 1913, and then voted on in 1914. She attended the state university, Stanford University, graduated from Washington Law School. She was Nevada's first woman lawyer admitted into the bar in 1902 at the age of 18. Very smart woman. She was admitted to the California Bar in 1908 and the Supreme Court Bar in 1916 as the fourth woman of this distinction. And she was the first female Assistant Attorney General in the state, and she held that office from 1911 to 1912. So here's the criteria of the markers. So what we had to do then is we had to choose. They have to commemorate people, places, or things instrumental to women gaining the right to vote in the United States. The dates must be part of the marker text, and the markers must be placed where they can be easily read, and that's where we've been working together on this as well. So here's some possible language for her marker, and this is something that Dr. Goodwin had to present when applying for this, for the markers within Carson City or within Nevada. She had to write up and saying this is why, and then they chose the ones they wanted. And so hers might say something to this extent. Lawyer and co-founder of the Nevada Equal Franchise Society, wrote the 1911 bill that led to women voting in 1940, and she lived across Carson Street. That's going to be fixed, I think. The marker itself is three feet wide, two feet tall, and a half inch thick. It weighs approximately 50 pounds of cast aluminum, comes with a seven-foot mounting pole, and then it's powdered coated. And so this is one that is in... That's already up, so it just kind of gives you an example of what it looks like. So where we're proposing is, and this is where we've worked together. So Felice Cohen actually lived in the middle of Carson Street, right outside the Robson House, so up north a little bit, but it was torn down when the street was widened. So we thought about having it... And it's the Robson House, right?
Robert's House.
Robert's House. And so we thought about having it there, but yet then Stephanie came and said, "Do you know that Carson City owns the right-of-way right outside the legislature?" Where hence bills are passed. And so we thought this is a perfect location. And so I kind of just gave you a proposed where it would be in the corner, and I give you some more, but just so you have an idea, it's across the street, then from the Bob McFadden Plaza. So where the stars are is... So the first one on top, I'm taking the picture from the Bob McFadden Plaza, looking at the location. Then I cross the street, and then you can see where it's going to be. And then, so there, people can, because another criteria is where it needs to be, is where people can pull over, stop, read it, and there are two parking spots right up there by the Pepsi truck, and you can see the blue truck there that's parked. And so there's something... And then it's visible when you're driving by, because that's another criteria of the marker as well. It needs to be visible while you're driving. And then this is a slide that Joanne asked, Dr. Goodwin asked me to put in. And so, and this is why the National Votes for Women's Trail is important, is because a lot of the history, you know, fires and floods were the enemy of the historical preservation. And so we're losing a lot of that, and we're trying to bring it back in to celebrate 2020 and the 100th anniversary. So what I'm asking, or do you ask?
Go ahead, Stephanie.
The request then before you today is for acceptance of the marker as the gift to the city. The city will then assume maintenance responsibilities for the marker after that point. We did ask some questions, such as what if, you know, what if something happened and the marker was destroyed? Would the city be responsible for full replacement of it? The answer to that is no. It's a one-time gift, but we would obviously do our best to maintain it, be able to, you know, wash it down once a year, every six months, just to help keep materials off of it. The snow melt materials could affect it, and then make sure that it's not graffiti. But if there was something beyond maintenance, we would not have to replace the marker.
Okay. That it? Jean, anything?
Well, I would just like to add that the League of Women Voters has been working with Molly on this and other ways to recognize the 100th anniversary of the 19th Amendment. And I might also add that the suffrage events created the League of Women Voters, so it is also our 100th birthday.
Very good.
Thank you.
All right. Board? John?
I just want to... No questions, I just have a comment. I'm glad to see that the Stanford graduate was not included, because we wouldn't want to recognize anyone who was a Stanford graduate.
That's probably true. Probably true. Pretty nasty folks we are, okay? Anybody? Any other board members? Public comment?
So if this is accepted, and we would greatly appreciate it if it is, because then this will be one of the five that will be put up. And then we will work with Dr. Goodwin, the League of Women Voters as well, to do somewhat of an unveiling ceremony for this as well. And, you know, of course, we'll make sure that it works with all of your schedules.
Very good. You know, Molly, I think you and I talked about it, but Coach Wohl gave me, he's now gone, a picture of every... gone, a picture of every lawyer in the state in 1935, and there are three women. Ms. Cohen was there. I mean, but, you know, it shows, you know, from the day that the suffrage movement started, you know, in 1935, still only three. And when I became state bar president, I followed the first two women who became state bar president, and that was in the late 1990s. So, you know, it's just a reminder of women and their participation in the function of our judiciary and state bar, and in the suffrage movement. So, it's a pretty good idea. It's a great idea. Any other board member comments? Are they ready to do a motion? Do a motion. All right, do it. All right.
I think I'll be the one to do it. I would be honored.
That's good.
I move to authorize the mayor to sign a letter of intent to the William J. Pomeroy, G. Pomeroy Foundation and National Collaborative for Women's History Sites, accepting the gift on behalf of Carson City.
There's a motion by supervisor Barrick, a second by supervisor Jome on the motion. Further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay? Thank you very much. Thanks. It's a great idea.
Wonderful.
Okay, let's, where am I now? 13 Bravo. Okay, who's doing this one? Mr. Cooley, you're gonna come do it, huh? Okay, 13 Bravo is a discussion of possible action to consider a business impact statement concerning a proposed ordinance amending Title V of the Carson City Municipal Code to codify the award of a solid waste and recyclable material collection franchise. I think it's fair to say that even though the contract is being, this is the actual charter side of that one, right? Okay, go ahead. Todd, Mr. Reese, you gonna do it?
You want to take it?
No, I'll start.
Rick Cooley, Operations Manager, Public Works. We're here before you today to, this is the first part of two items, to bring before you the, the business impact statement concerning the proposed ordinance. And we put out for the month of May. I advertised for this, got no comments back, and that's what's in the, included in the packet. The late material is just defining that there were no impacts, there were no comments that were received. That's the reason it was late, we're making sure they had all the time to receive any of those that came in late, but didn't receive any, so there's no changes to what we've submitted.
Okay. Todd, anything you want to, Mr. Reese, anything you want to add?
Todd Reese, Deputy District Attorney, for the record. I'd just reiterate what Rick said. We didn't receive any comments in general. This franchise agreement is going to reduce the garbage costs for businesses, and...
Got it.
So, it's got a positive impact instead of a negative impact on the businesses. And that's all we have.
All right. Board members? Supervisor Bunkowski, go.
Just, just to clarify, do I understand you correctly? I think I heard Rick say that there's no difference between the version that was given to us as late material and the version that was attached to our packet.
That's correct.
Okay.
Except for the signature, that's correct.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure, because I didn't see any, so I was wondering why we got it.
Keep us on our toes.
Yeah, man, that's getting down to the fine points. That's good. Okay. Anybody else on the board? Public comment on this issue? Anybody? Okay, I don't see any. Supervisor Bunkowski, you want to make a motion?
I move to, I move to accept the business impact statement as prepared and find that the purported, the proposed ordinance does not impose a direct and significant economic burden on a business, or directly restrict the formation, operations, or expansion of a business.
Second.
There's a motion and a second on the motion discussion. Hearing and seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Whoop, John, I did, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to say, I was the opponent of waste management as a contract, but I will vote for this, because it's a different matter.
Different matter. Yeah. Understood. Okay. Anybody else? We all on the motion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Okay, we're carried. The record will reflect supervisor Barrick's comments. Okay, let's now take up the next one. 13 Charlie, this is ordinance related to this. Go ahead.
Todd Reese, Deputy District...
Why are we doing this? Why are we doing, go ahead. Sorry.
Todd Reese, Deputy District Attorney, for the record. This is the ordinance going along with the franchise agreement and the business impact statement. The ordinance, it does two things. One, it repeals the existing franchise, and then, two, it acts as essentially a guidepost to direct the public and anybody who's interested in seeing what franchises Carson City has to the franchise agreement. It also reiterates some provisions of the agreement as far as mandatory service and the exemption, and sets those forth in the, in the Carson City Municipal Code. That's the extent of the ordinance.
Okay. Board members, supervisor Jome.
I just want to make sure I understand that regardless of what we do with this, it doesn't affect the franchise agreement, right? So, we can't, I mean, if I were to propose changes to this, it would have no impact whatsoever on the franchise agreement, nor could we change the franchise agreement through this process. Is that a fair statement?
That's an absolutely correct statement.
Okay. So, again, other than serving as a guidepost, this is unnecessary. We don't need this. Is that also a fair statement?
That is also a fair statement.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else? Any board members? Public comment? Anybody want to weigh in on this? Supervisor Bunkowski, you ready for motion? Go.
Well, no, I have a question for Stacy. I'd just like to know his thought process for his last comment.
Well, I, as a, I wasn't on the board, so I didn't get an opportunity to vote or make changes to the agreement, and I just had questions about why we're doing this and why we're doing this now, as opposed to having done this when the whole franchise agreement was being brought forward. Why wasn't it packaged together? So, it looks as though by bringing this forward now, to someone who asked me a question, is it possible to change the franchise agreement through this process? And the answer to that is no. So, it's, it just sort of disconnected to me as to why this happens now, as opposed to happening at the time of the franchise agreement. And it appears to the public, at least to one member of the public who contacted me, that we could propose changes to this. And my answer to that was no.
John?
That's interesting, because I asked the same question. I asked if I could make changes to this that would then affect the franchise agreement, and got the same answer, which was, "No, you can't change the franchise agreement without going back through the whole process."
Right, which, again, brings up the question as to why, why do we even do this?
I think Dan wants to weigh in on that. The deputies, we got two deputies here.
No, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I just wanted to add some clarification on the record here in response to, you know, some of this discussion on the record. It's true that, you know, the franchise agreement itself, the terms and conditions that are incorporated in the contract cannot be changed or modified via the adoption of this board, by this board of this ordinance. However, I would say that although it's not statutorily required for this governing body to adopt an ordinance, you know, to reflect, as Mr. Reese said on the record, you know, to incorporate a guidepost in the CCMC, I do think that there is another pivotal aspect of this that does actually connect and provides a nexus for why we're doing it today. And that reason is because, you know, what's existing in CCMC is the text of the existing franchise agreement, you know, for the collection services. That is, you know, is going to expire at the end of the month, and then on July 1st, the new contract kicks into place. And so, again, for purposes of transparency and putting the members of the public on notice, it's a benefit to the members of the public, so they can turn to CCMC, and then they can see that through the incorporation of that text. They can go to the Public Works Departmental website and pull up the actual franchise agreement, the new one that was awarded to Waste Management. And then, aside from that as well, there's no included or embedded sunset provision within the existing, existing CCMC provision. So, I would say that although it's not a complete necessity, because the applicability of the existing franchise text would just go away, you know, organically by itself, it, again, for, for, for the purposes of providing a benefit to the members of the public for this guidepost reason, it's good to repeal that existing section that will no longer be applicable, and then replace it with a codification of the new award to Waste Management.
May I follow up, Mayor?
Sure.
Dan, so if, if that's the case, why wouldn't we just repeal and reference the franchise agreement as opposed to putting certain components of the franchise agreement into the ordinance? In other words, why not just reference the franchise agreement, stop, repeal the old, done, instead of referencing certain components of it?
That's an excellent question, and I'll say on the record that the incorporation of that second element, and I would say that there's only one element that's included in this proposed ordinance, and that being a specific reference to the exemption provision to opt out of the mandatory solid waste collection. That was a legislative decision that I made in consultation with Mr. Reese. That was my directive, and the reason I thought it was important to include that is because it's difficult for members of the public to review just an incorporation by reference of a 200-page contract, and then be able to go in there and figure out whether or not there's an exemption clause that would allow them to opt out.
Okay. Thank you. Fair answer. Thank you.
Supervisor Barrick.
Thank you, Dan. I listened carefully to that, especially after Stacy's questions to you about if this would change anything. What if this board voted no on this? Would it change anything at all? Is that what you just said?
It would not impact the terms and conditions of the award that's already been awarded, or the agreement that's already been awarded. Well, and I think, you know, we've done this, we did this in the last franchise agreement, but I think that at the end of the day, from a, from a legal standpoint, you correct them if I'm wrong, Dan or Todd, is that, you know, if there's a breach of the agreement, and the agreement is terminated for some reason prior to its natural termination or its described termination, that the ordinance would have to be changed as well. That would be the appropriate measure to take, I would say. Yes. Because, just because the ordinance is in place, doesn't put us on any additional requirements to enforce the terms of the actual contract. In other words, there's, there's nothing that the ordinance does that, that makes more or less difficult to, to, for lack of a better word, enforce the terms of, of the franchise agreement. No, I, I, I wouldn't say that's a concern, a legal concern. The contract exists, you know, by itself, away from this ordinance, and the ordinance is, you know, I would say, again, to characterize it properly, is nothing more than just a pure codification of the award itself.
All right. Public comment on this issue? Anybody? Board?
Yes.
Go.
Yeah, I'm gonna vote against this one, because I'm against waste management, and I'm against 15 years.
Okay.
Bill number 104.
Anybody else?
Yeah. You know, I appreciate John's comments, but because this does clean up the ordinance in CCMC, I will vote for it just for that reason. I'm not happy with it, but I do think that we need to keep the CCMC as clean and up-to-date as possible.
It's kind of where I am, too. Okay? Anybody else? Motion's in order.
I move to introduce bill number 2019-104.
Second.
There's a motion and a second on the motion discussion. Let's see. Hearing and seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Nay.
Okay, gotta have the count on that one. Three, two? That's why I don't see it up here, but, okay. All right. Motion passes three to two. Two.
There it goes.
Kathy, did you catch? There it is. Okay, we got it. All right. Thank you. All right. Let's now move on to item 14. This is a possible action and discussion regarding proposed carson rifle and pistol range operating interim plan. Ms. Budge, good morning to you.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor.
How you doing today?
I'm great. How are you?
Good.
Jennifer Budge, Parks and Recreation Director. I'm here today to present an item approved and developed solely by the Range Task Force. I wanted to just first start off by thanking this group of 12 individuals that are volunteering time out of their busy schedules to really help us, you know, troubleshoot operational issues, site issues, fees, you know, anything and everything. So, I just wanted to take the time to thank them for all their effort. So, this item was developed by the Range Task Force. It's presented to you in the form that they approved it. We have a few corrections that's happened since then that I wanted to point out, not only from the Range Task Force, but the DA's office, and then some members of the Board of Supervisors that have commented as well. So, that way, we can discuss everything in the totality of that. This is an effort to try to increase use of the facility while we're still working on design and engineering. I'm happy to report that we'll have 100% drawings on the shooting bays next week, so we'll be able to get quotes on getting those approved and be able to have those improvements hopefully done, you know, fairly quickly. And then, we'll be at 60% design for the rest of the range. So, we've also had discussions with the adjoining neighbor that might be able to provide a majority of the dirt for free, and there's actually been a lot going on that the public might not be aware of. So, I'm really happy to report some positive news. If you turn to the interim plan, as presented, a couple of the changes that have been requested for clarification are item 5B-C. Instead of must provide RSO, so that's under the commercial entity portion, it should be must provide range safety officers or equivalent and evidence of those certifications. It's not always applicable for those groups. For law enforcement, they typically don't have range safety officers, but they have range officers or range masters. They have different titles. So, just putting range officers or equivalent in that realm. And then, on the attached release and waiver of liability, in the last sentence of that first bold paragraph, it says, "And understand that my reckless or negligent conduct," it should be, "and understand that any reckless or negligent conduct."
Okay. Is that it?
Yeah, and then in my staff report, I had a couple recommendations to, for your consideration to maybe add to this. One would be, we're gonna have a lot of changes. This is gonna be a really dynamic situation in this interim situation. We're gonna be having improvements made, modifications. Eventually, we're gonna have staffing here shortly to help supplement. So, perhaps you could consider authorizing me to make some adjustments to the interim plan as that changes, so we can operationally work with the club and our agreement with them, and make sure that, you know, we're addressing everything as it kind of comes forward, so I don't have to come back to the board every, for every little request. And then, in addition...
What you're asking is that, I think what you're asking is that there's a task force that's working on this, and if the task force makes a recommendation to you and you carry out that, that's what you're asking for?
We could do that, but if there's a lapse in them even meeting, just authorizing me to make those operational decisions as needed.
I don't know if that, that may be, that may be outside...
And we can put some bookends on that, but I just, I wanted to discuss what that might look like, but we are gonna be having improvements, so obviously, if, let's say the shooting bays have improvements, we might be able to open that up five to seven days a week, or, you know, it might conflict with this interim schedule. And so, rather than to come back here to make a simple operational adjustment, it might be easier to authorize me...
Supervisor Barrick will go.
...to do something like that.
So, if you look down at number seven, are you trying to indicate you need, that that's not enough latitude for you to do? Because I think that's what the task force even designed there, is that the city, meaning we thought you, would work on the schedule and then would fix this schedule accordingly. Like you said, if you're gonna have the contractors in and stuff to do something, you don't think that number seven actually gives you the authority to take care of the odd, odd issue that comes up because of an operational...
To me, that item is all about reconstruction and construction activities, and it might impact operational issues as well, but we could probably work with it on that. And then, I think there's, there's definitely, you know, comments in here about if there's a safety issue that...
Right.
...that we can act accordingly.
So, I thought we took care of, I'm trying to see what other scenario besides safety or construction schedule meld you would have to deal with, that we didn't give you the authority.
I would just know that as we have improvements, that we'll probably modify the schedule, hopefully increasing the public use.
Oh, you mean as the bays get done?
As projects get completed...
We would open up... We would open up more.
The operational portion would be adjusted.
So don't, well, I think that maybe on seven, we could add, including increasing times as construction is completed. Like you said, that you'd have the authority to grant more time on the range without coming back. If it gets the schedule better, is what you're trying to say. I like that. Just not that you're going to reduce the schedule other than for construction. Okay.
Unless there's a safety issue, I don't foresee that happening.
Adding more time.
You make the motion. See what it looks like.
Right. We'll wait till more public comment.
All right.
And then some other recommendations I had in the staff report. Should you approve this as presented? I'd like the clarification that reservation groups, clubs and commercial entities, they'll be responsible for providing the waivers for individual participants.
I didn't catch that. Tell me again where that is, please.
It's on the second page of my staff report, the first bullet, reservation groups. So reservation groups, that would be the club and commercial entities, would be responsible for providing waivers to all individual participants within their group. So that's the waiver that's attached to your packet. Groups must also be able to demonstrate proof of signed waivers onsite at the facility during their reservation. So if our ranger comes up, they can inspect, and it could have just a binder onsite. It wouldn't be that difficult to manage, and groups not in compliance, you know, may lose their shooting privileges. Also, reservations would, if this is approved as presented, not be accommodated during public use times, so we can have the most public use available during those limited times on Sundays, Wednesdays and Thursdays. But efforts to reschedule those Sunday groups, if possible, I don't want to inconvenience groups that are already scheduled, but try to work with those reservation groups to go to another day, so we can open up that public use. And then any reports of errant bullets at the landfill during reservations will be investigated immediately and result in the group's loss of shooting privileges at the facility, or may result.
Okay. Supervisor Giomi.
So just to clarify that, you're proposing those three bullet points be included in this interim plan?
Correct.
And that was not discussed at the meeting?
There are additions that, we briefly discussed those items, but not in detail, and they didn't include that as part of their plan, but they're items that I'd like to see added.
Okay. I'm just trying to clarify. Thank you.
Supervisor Monkowski.
Yeah, they were discussed, Stacy, at the meeting, and I don't think, well, I won't say, never mind, I won't say that, but it was discussed. I'd also propose to delete page two of the presented plan in its entirety. It's just commentary. It's actually not part of the plan.
Good amendment. Okay. Supervisor Giomi.
Yeah, I didn't know if you were done. Are you done?
Yes.
Okay. Sorry, I didn't, I just, on the, the range being open, on item number five, the range being open Tuesdays through Saturdays by reservation, is that the full range? That's the full range?
That's what the Range Task Force is proposing.
Okay. And, okay.
Okay. Those are my questions. All right. Other questions?
Do it stupid, but...
Go. We got, Supervisor Berg will then go back.
So if I'm looking at the draft interim plan, so the proposed changes would be in 5B-C to do the equivalency for the range safety officer, and same thing under C, law enforcement, A, range officers are equivalent. Seven, we could add a sentence maybe that said the city is allowed to increase public use times as appropriate, so that you could increase times as you, as we get projects done. And then you wanted, and what was, and then also that we would look to update the agreement with the club, so they would move from Sundays to whatever day, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, one of the other days, which would increase our public use time on the Sunday. And they were agreeable to that, right? They would move, they're willing to move their day?
Yes, that was their preference from the beginning.
Yeah, okay. I just want to make sure that we have agreement.
But I think authorizing the city manager to sign that amendment to the agreement.
Yeah, right. And then, did you have another? What was the other?
The three bullets on the staff report, on page two of the staff report, about reservation groups. It's really more process-related and expectations.
I'm not following that.
Oh, these, I see what she's saying. She wants to add these three bullets into here also. Okay. Now, sorry, I count on now what she's saying. And we did discuss those issues, so I don't think any of those would be a surprise.
I just want to make sure it's clear about those expectations with the groups and what they're required to provide.
Okay. Thank you.
And deleting page two.
And deleting page two.
And the word "any" on the waiver.
I'd like to know, where is that "any"? What are you putting on the waiver again?
The last full sentence on the upper bold paragraph.
It's on the release of waiver and liability, it's the bold printed paragraph, the last sentence, instead of "and understand that my reckless or negligent conduct," should be "and understand that any reckless or negligent conduct." Just switching out that word.
Okay.
And that was acceptable to the DA's office.
That was what?
It was acceptable change to the district attorney's office.
Okay. Any other comments or questions before we take public comment? Public comment, anybody? Mr. Carver, you're back there in the back. You okay with all this?
Aye.
All right. Record reflect. That answered, did you hear that? Okay. So we know where we're going. All right. Any other public comment? Seeing none. Somebody on the table, Supervisor Monkowski, go.
I move to approve the Carson Rifle and Pistol Range Opening Interim Plan with the following changes. Change to item 5B subsection C as read into the record. Item 5C subsection A as read into the record. Item 7 as read into the record. Deleting the second page of the interim plan under benefits to proposed range plan in its entirety. Adding the three bullet points in page two of the staff report, starting with reservation groups, reservations will not be accompanied or accommodated, and reports of errant bullets. And finally, removing the word "my" from the bold, first bold paragraph on the release and waiver of liability and replacing it with the word "any."
There's a motion and a second. Everybody clear on the motion? Okay. On the motion, there's a motion and a second. On the motion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Where is it? All opposed, nay? Okay. Passed unanimously, all right.
Thank you.
Board, we're going to take up on the finance matters. You want to do it now, or you want to take a five or 10-minute break before we go? It's up to you. Everybody on the board, okay? Going? All right. Let's go.
Oh, I have a disclosure.
15A.
15A. This is, let me read it in the record here to get it going, then put a disclosure on, so we know what we're doing here. Discussion of possible action regarding 15Alpha. Discussion of possible action regarding a final appropriation for the Community Support Services Grant Funding and Quality of Life Initiative for fiscal year 2020. We have some disclosures on this. Supervisor Giomi, or Supervisor Monkowski, I think.
Okay. I have disclosure on both 15A and 15B, and it's the same disclosure, coincidentally. NRS 281A.420 requires me to disclose a conflict of interest and abstain from voting when I have a disqualifying conflict. In my private commitment, I serve as an unpaid board member for RSVP and for advocates to end domestic violence, both of which are private nonprofit organizations. Both organizations have applied and are recommended for funding under this item. Additionally, I'm employed by Nevada Health Centers, which applied for funding but did not receive a recommendation. In those private commitments, I have fiduciary, I have fiduciary duties as a board member. I also have a substantial and continuing business relationship with Nevada Health Centers as my employer. Although the recommended funding amounts under this item are submitted by the Application Review Work Group, without my involvement, this board may choose to accept and or modify those recommendations. Because the judgment of a reasonable person in my position would be materially affected by my relationships, I will not be voting on this matter.
Another disclosure?
Yes. I also have a disclosure for items 15A and 15B. NRS 281A.420 requires me to disclose a conflict of interest and abstain from participating when I have a disqualifying conflict. In my private commitment, I am a partner in the real estate brokerage firm, NAI Alliance, Carson City. In that capacity, I am also the employer of a person who is a member of the Application Review Work Group, tasked with ranking and evaluating the proposed project applications for funding purposes. Although I have never discussed with my employee her actions, just to clarify, she's not an employee, she's an independent contractor, so I don't get in trouble. I've never discussed with my independent contractor her actions with the work group or what their recommendations are. I feel that this matter may be affected by my employer-employee relationship and therefore constitute a disqualifying conflict. In addition, my business and life partner, Andy Wilson, is a member of the board of the Boys and Girls Club, who has requested funding under this item. Therefore, I will not vote on this matter.
Okay. We have two disclosures and two abstentions, the same, okay. All right. All right. Any other disclosures? Seeing none. Who's going to, morning Hannah?
Morning.
All right. Who's going to do it?
Good morning.
You guys can take a break if you want.
Oh, now we know why, now we know why they said we didn't get a break. Yeah. Okay, now it's clear to me.
We'll take our minutes and go.
Okay.
All right.
Who's going to do it? Go.
For the record, my name is Miriam Akavich, grants analyst, or I'm sorry, grants administrator. To my left, I have Sherry Russell, CFO, and Hannah McDonald, Executive Director of Partnership Carson City. The submission is, this morning, the submission is to discuss, review and approve the Community Support Services funding and the Quality of Life Initiative for fiscal year 2020. As recommended by the Application Review Work Group and the Partnership Carson City Executive Board and subject to approval from Carson City Board of Supervisors. Carson City received seven Community Support Services grant applications for the adult competitive category and five applications for the youth competitive category. The total funding available is $380,000, $79,250 to be awarded for adult programs, $66,250 to be awarded for youth programs, $114,500 to be awarded for non-competitive programs, and $120,000 to be awarded for the Boys and Girls Club of Western Nevada. All of these projects have met the CSSG program critical needs and are eligible for funding. So what I wanted to do is run through all the applications in the different categories just very quickly, so the audience knows what applications we received. Okay, so for the adult program category, and these are in order of rankings, so the first one is the Nevada Rural Counties RSVP. The funding request was $25,000. The recommendation was $16,000. RSVP provides critical services to help homebound and low-income seniors and veteran seniors. The next agency is Volunteer Attorneys for Rural Nevada, also known as VARN. The funding request was $25,000, and the recommendation from the review group was $13,000. VARN provides free civil legal services to low-income Carson City victims of domestic violence. The third agency is St. Vincent de Paul. They requested $12,000, and the recommendation was $11,750. St. Vincent serves the poor in Carson City with financial assistance to combat short-term poverty, and that is, they assist in emergency housing. Capital City Circles, funding request was $16,380. The recommendation is $11,500. Circles offers a cooperative program for Carson City families struggling both occasionally and financially.
And so everybody knows, I did make a disclosure on Circles because I'm no longer on the Circles board.
Okay.
I'm not, they have a new board effective in January, so.
Okay. Good. The next agency is United Latino Community. Funding request was $32,818. The recommendation is $10,500. Circles offers a cooperative program for Carson City families struggling both occasionally and financially.
And so everybody knows, I did make a disclosure on Circles because I'm no longer on the Circles board.
Okay.
I'm not, they have a new board effective in January, so.
Okay. Good. The next agency is United Latino Community. Funding request was $32,818. The recommendation is $10,500. United Latino Community assists Carson City Hispanic and Latino individuals and families with a wide range of health and human services. The next agency is the Salvation Army. They requested $35,000, and the recommendation was for $10,500. The program helps keep families and children, seniors and disabled individuals from becoming homeless by assisting with rent when a client is in danger of being evicted. This is the same program that St. Vincent is also proposing, just for the record. Ormsby Association of Carson City is the next agency, and the funding request is $13,000, and the recommendation is $6,000. The Ormsby Association runs several programs that assist individuals with developmental delays. Okay? So that's the adult category. The next category is the non-competitive category, and that is a five-year Carson City program and up for review next year. So just for the record. And so with those agencies, we have Carson City Senior Center, funding amount $13,000, and the program is the Senior Center Meals on Wheels program. The next agency is FISH, and the amount of funding is $7,500, and that is for emergency dental services for low-income children and adults. The next program is CASA, or the next agency, excuse me, is CASA, funding amount $25,000. The description is the recruitment and training of volunteers to advocate for abused children as requested by Carson City courts. The next agency is Advocates to End Domestic Violence, funding $9,000. This money goes for providing emergency shelter for domestic violence survivors. The next agency is Community Counseling Center, $60,000, and they provide extensive case management to youth and adults who are dependent on alcohol and drugs. And then the last funding amount goes to, and it's under the Quality of Life Fund, goes to the Boys and Girls Club of Western Nevada, and it's $120,000, and that goes for the purpose of facility maintenance. So that wraps up the adult and non-competitive categories. I'm going to turn it over to Hannah McDonald. She's going to talk about the youth categories.
Good morning, Hannah. Go ahead.
Good morning, Hannah McDonald, for the record. The Partnership Carson City manages the CSSG Grants for Youth. The applications we received were from Advocates to End Domestic Violence, Boys and Girls Club of Western Nevada, Foundations for Carson City Parks and Recreation, Nevada Health Centers, and Ron Wood Family Resource Center. I will do the same thing that my partner did and give you a little bit about their funding requests, their program, and what our funding recommendation was. For Advocates to End Domestic Violence, they provide teen dating violence programs in our Carson City schools and educate youth on safe dating and the dangers of date rape. The funding request was $7,359. We recommended full funding of the $7,359. Boys and Girls Club of Western Nevada, they have the Teen Center Positive Action Program. They provide substance abuse education and life wellness education. Their previous funding was $15,000. Their current request was $22,978, and their funding recommendation for this year is $12,216. Foundation for Carson City Parks and Rec wanted to implement a new program called Kayak, where they would help children understand the need of physical movement and activities and outdoor recreation sports, and help supplement activities in the community that are maybe outside of an organized sport such as soccer and basketball. Their request was $12,000. The funding recommendation was zero. Nevada Health Centers has a dental van program, which is the Ronald McDonald Van. It would be traveling here on a quarterly basis to provide dental services to Carson I will elaborate on that after. Ron Wood Family Resource Center requests sustainable funding for their vast efforts that they provide to Carson City residents and youth in our community. Their previous funding was $25,000. Their request was $49,969, and the recommendation was $41,056, of which I will elaborate on that as well. As some of you know, Partnership Carson City also has a dental program of which that money came from 2016, 2017 carryover money that was in partnership with FISH and our Partnership Carson City nonprofit. We requested zero, but the funding recommendations left $2,969 on the table. It is the recommendation of Partnership Carson City and its dental partner providers to put that remaining amount into the Carson City -- Partnership Carson City dental program to continue to provide relief services for our clinical dental efforts. And then Partnership Carson City receives a 4% management fee of these youth grants, and that amount is $2,650. I also want to note on the chart that you were provided, the 2018, 2019 funding amount that is listed for advocates is incorrect, just minus that four on that chart. They did not receive $47,000 last year. It's just $7,359.
Before we go on, Supervisor Bagwell has a disclosure to make as well.
I didn't see something on here until you were just reading something out loud. I missed it, and so I thought, whoops. Your Project Five listed on there is not receiving any funding or going to be discussed. Dan? Dan? Oh, okay, making sure you heard me. I'm on that foundation board, and so I needed to disclose that. I'm sorry I didn't -- it's not getting funded. I never saw anything on it, but I thought, whoa-oh. Just you saying it out loud made me realize, so I just needed to disclose.
Gonna vote, right? Okay.
It's not receiving funding, and I'm not going to discuss it.
All right.
Okay, just one more.
We all straight up here now? Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Are there any further questions?
I do.
Go, we have to -- I don't think we've had any yet, but we're gonna have some now probably.
Okay, so in general, just looking at internal controls and issues of dealing with grant funding and things of that nature, I think that the dental program that Partnership Carson City does, it's great. I don't have any issues there helping children. It certainly meets a critical need. I'm just not comfortable with you administering your own grant. I mean, the objective that we have in all of these is they're reimbursable and a second party is reimbursing the grant, so I'm wondering if we want to have the $2,969 of the dental program. We will not advance those dollars to the youth program, and they can just request their funding from you, from our grant administrator. Does that make sense, what I'm saying? So that I have the dual controls like every other grant? So I don't want to derail what you're trying to do, I just want the internal control.
Not a problem. We can -- sorry. We can make sure that in the MOU that we specify that that specific -- those specific dollars are reimbursable dollars versus advanced dollars. Not a problem.
Hannah McDonald, for the record, I am totally comfortable with that. I agree to it. The only reason, I just want to make this very clear, the only reason that we did not place that money with a different agency as we had in the past was because it took an extensive amount of time for our providers to receive payment, and so they're doing an amazing service, less than Medicaid rate, and so we want to get their money back to them as quick as possible. I can wait, I don't want them to wait.
Any other questions? Board members, any other questions? I don't see public comment, anybody want to weigh in here? Anybody?
I would like to make a comment about Ron Wood Family Resource Center and why they're receiving a significant increase. Ron Wood Family Resource Center, over the past multiple funding cycles, has only received $25,000, and their services are extensive to what most of our nonprofits, including Partnership Carson City, provides in the community. It is the opinion of my board and myself and the staff of Partnership Carson City that this year Ron Wood Family Resource Center should receive, if not all of their requests, as close as possible that we could receive. They receive requests on a daily basis from different community agencies, Carson City agencies and the school district, to provide services of which they never say no to. It is for this year and this year only that the PCC Objective Board, which is the Partnership Carson City Board, has decided to give them as much as they possibly could. They received the lion's share of the fund, which ultimately made it so that these other wonderful and critical programs could not receive everything that they deserve as well. It is with great ask that we ask in the future that Ron Wood Family Resource Center be considered for sustainable funding so that they do not have to continue to apply for the CSSG funds and that we can continue to fund other innovative programs that come our way that are also considered critical. Their efforts of which they provide, Joyce Buckingham and her team provide, would provide great stress on our city if we did not have them doing what they do. $41,000 is not even close to what they need, and so we are just asking that they be considered for future continued funding without having to ask for it.
Okay. Okay. Responding back there, Joyce?
I appreciate the support, I very much do.
All right. Public comment, anybody else?
No big questions.
All right. Board, we ready? Motion's in order.
I move to approve the Community Support Services Grant Funding for FY 2020 and the allocated funding for the Boys and Girls Club of Western Nevada, as recommended with the PCC Dental Program being stipulated as a reimbursement grant.
Everybody clear on the motion? Is there a second?
I'll second it, but I'd like to make a comment about the last matter.
Well, for the record, let me just get it clear. There's a motion and a second. Now we're on discussion.
Okay, great.
Clarification. Thanks, John.
Yeah, I don't have a quarrel with the idea that was presented regarding continuing funding, but one board can't do something that impacts the next board, so I'm not sure how this would work if you're talking about continuing funding. I still think it has to come back in some form. Am I right?
Next year, John, we'll look at the non-competitive. I think she was trying to recommend that for next year's allocation, we look at which ones are going to get non-competitive, and she's asking for Ron Wood to be considered in the non-competitive.
Okay, I didn't understand it. That wasn't what you said, so I just don't want to bind a future board. I understand. Thank you.
Good clarification. Okay. Any further discussion on the motion? Not all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. Okay, let's see here, coming up. Motion passes, three ayes, two abstentions. Okay. Now let's take up the next item. This is 15 Bravo. Want to tell us where we are on this?
Yeah. We need to go, I need to see it.
Okay, we'll do it. Why don't you guys just stay here? We'd miss you.
Because you kicked us out.
We were dismissed, Captain. Unseremonious.
Well, I got feeling lonely up here, you know? Okay.
Do I go first?
All right, let's put it in the record here, first what we're doing. This is, we're taking up item 15. Let's see, make sure I get the right one here. 15 Bravo. This is Proposed Resolution for Temporary Interfund Loan. No, wait a minute. This is for Possible Action. Wait a minute here.
The resolution.
The resolution.
To pay all this great money.
Okay, 15 Bravo, let's go. For possible, yeah, for Discussion of Possible Action Regarding Proposed Resolution, Authorizing Expenditure of Up to $380,000 for the Community Support Services Grant and the Quality of Life Initiative to Nonprofit Organizations for Fiscal Year 2020. That's the most, that's the topic. Disclosure's in order.
NRS 281A.420 requires me to disclose a conflict of interest and abstain from participating when I have a disqualifying conflict. In my private commitment, I am a partner in the real estate brokerage firm NAI Alliance, Carson City. In that capacity, I am also the employer of a person who is a member of the Application Review Work Group tasked with ranking and evaluating the proposed project applications for funding purposes. Although I have never discussed with my, again, not employee, independent contractor, her actions with the work group or what their recommendations are, I feel that this matter may be affected by my independent contractor-employer relationship and therefore constitutes a disqualifying conflict. In addition, my business and life partner, Andy Wilson, is a member of the Board of the Boys and Girls Club, which has requested funding, which was, I believe, just approved by the balance of the board. Therefore, I will not be voting on this matter.
Stacy.
NRS 281A.420 requires me to disclose a conflict of interest and abstain from voting when I have a disqualifying conflict. In my private commitment, I serve as an unpaid board member for RSVP and for Advocates to End Domestic Violence, both of which are private nonprofit organizations. Both organizations have applied and are recommended for funding in the proposed resolution under this item. Additionally, I'm employed by Nevada Health Centers, which applied for funding but did not receive a recommendation. In these private commitments, I have fiduciary duties as a board member, and I also have a substantial and continuing business relationship with Nevada Health Centers as my employer. Although the recommended funding amounts under this amount, under this item, are submitted by the Application Review Work Group. Without my involvement, this board may choose to accept and I or modify those recommendations. Because the judgment of a reasonable person in my position would be materially affected by my relationships, I will not be voting on this matter.
Okay.
I'm not leaving.
All right. All right. Want to tell us what we're doing here? I mean, this is just carrying forward. Go ahead.
Keep turning it off? Yes. Okay. For Possible Action, Discussion of Possible Action Regarding a Proposed Resolution Authorizing Expenditure of $380,000 for the Community Support Services Grant and the Quality of Life Initiative to Nonprofit Organizations for Fiscal Year 2020. That is it. I can break it down. In total, the CSSG program will award $380,000 with $260,000 from the General Fund and $120,000 from the Quality of Life Fund to nonprofit organizations that address a critical need in Carson City. The general fund amount of 260 will be broken out as follows, and that's again, $79,250 will be awarded for the adult programs, $66,250,000 will be awarded to the youth programs, and $114,500 will be awarded to the non-competitive programs, $120,000 will be awarded to the, from the Quality of Life Initiative to the Boys and Girls Club of Western Nevada.
Okay. Questions for the board? Public comment? We've been through this, but, all right. We ready to do this?
2019 R-10.
Did this pick up the, did this pick up the change we had to the dental program stuff?
No, because it's just, I'll read, I'll put that in.
It's still paid from the quality, it's still paid from the general fund, so I think it'll, it's just a procedural.
All right. Very good. Okay. I didn't hear any public comment. We okay with that? All right. All right, board. All right, now it's time. Motion's in order.
I move to adopt Resolution Number 2019-R-10.
There's a motion and a second on the motion discussion. Hearing and seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Abstentions? Two. Okay. Three to two. I mean, three, yes, passes, two abstentions. All right. All right, let's, yeah, let's do a recess now. We'll take a recess until just shortly after 10:00 AM.
They took theirs.
You gotta, you can go again.
Well, we'll carry on. You guys go ahead and get yours. Carry on. You can't do anything with two votes.
Sorry.[262.64]
The canine replacement, we had a dog pass away from illness. I guess he hasn't passed away, but he's got cancer, so he had to be retired. There were door locks at juvenile, I guess the kids were repeatedly kicking the doors, so they had to get a stronger locking mechanism. And then the LUMIS study for the rifle range improvements. So the important part of this fund is the break fix. After these changes, there's 274,334 available through June 30th, 2019. We anticipate rolling that forward into fiscal year 2020, as long as nothing major breaks. If you have any questions on the others, I'm going to go through the rest of these a little quickly. A lot of these are donations that we weren't expecting. But the grant fund, we received 256,453 in more grants. There's an extra $1,000 anticipated need from the general fund, just how the expenses are coming out in the three different grants that require a match, which is the DUI program, the regional gang, and the cops program. So just a $1,000 change there. That's pretty much the grants program. There it is. Okay. Residential construction tax. This one is basically moving that $300,000 from fiscal year 19 into 20. So I'm letting $300,000 drop to ending fund balance because of the capital improvement you guys approved to pay the playground out of the regional construction instead of the 210 fund. So we're making that happen here. And then the ambulance fund, this is really just moving money around. Since we started that basic life support program, we want to take their real ambulance or all the ambulance charges and kind of break them out, so we can tell the basic life support revenue versus expense. So that's what that's doing. The $1.3 million we determined is not a grant, it's actually a reimbursement of user fees from the Medicaid program. And then there's the manual sick leave payouts. And then we are adjusting OPEB and pension in just about every enterprise fund. These were very large adjustments last year, and we ended up having a budget violation. They're non-cash adjustments to our liability, and nothing hurts my heart more than to have a budget violation on a non-cash item. So this is where I was saying, we're just kind of making sure we don't have a budget Stormwater drainage. We had some extra interest earnings, so we put that money into vehicle repairs, again, just to be safe. Water is the big $7 million bond that we had not budgeted previously. So we actually got $7,592,720 in bond proceeds and premium, which were added to the project. There was 202,441 bond issuance costs that went against that as well. Connection fees for residential and commercial were 474,937, and interest earnings were 130,800 over and above. So we put that money into areas like the pension and OPEB that we thought needed to be adjusted. Couple of new bonds on there, too. The interest payments are in there included as well. Building permits, we increased this lately. We've been doing this every year. The Charles Abbott contract is a percentage based on the revenue we earn, and permits are going big gangbusters right now. So we increased it as much as we possibly could to hopefully not have a problem at year end. And fleet was not augmented during the first round of augmentation, so the radio console equipment, that's from the bond that we received in '17, just rolling that forward. That is anticipated to be bought in 2020. And so most of those are roll forwards of things that should have been, the sugar loaf equipment should have been included in the first round of augmentations. But again, that OPEB and pension are in there, we're just, we're increasing that again. So in total, the augmentations are, as the mayor said, $11,948,137.
Questions from the board? Public comment? Anybody want to weigh in? Okay, somebody want to make a motion?
Yep, I got it. I move to adopt resolution number 2019-R-11, a resolution to augment and amend the Carson City fiscal year 2018-19 budget in the amount of $11,948,137.
There's a motion and a second on the motion discussion. Hearing none.
We'll have discussion.
Discussion's off.
Just a brief one. I really want to thank Nancy, the procedure where we added this last year, that the IFC would be documented at the meetings. I think you'll see now that we already understood the augmentation, so hopefully you can kind of see the value, that there's no surprises to us now, because you're going over the IFCs at the meeting. So thank you, and hopefully you and the staff can see the benefit for that.
Okay. Further discussion? Comments? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Carried, okay. Yeah, all right. Let's take up the next item. This is a temporary, we're going to pull 15D, right? Okay, pull that one. 15 ECHO. This is discussion of possible action regarding a proposed agreement for excess workers' compensation liability insurance with Safety National Casualty Corporation for a total estimated premium of $112,095 for each year of a two-year policy term, for a total aggregate estimated premium of $224,190. Who's doing this?
I'll kick us off. So Brendan and Cecilia are here to answer any questions. Brendan is from USI Insurance and has been with the city for years, and he's wonderful. And Cecilia's also been with the city for years, and she's wonderful. She's our risk manager. So what we're doing here is we're approving our workers' compensation excess insurance for the next year with Safety National. I am asking for a two-year approval, which is odd, usually it's only one year at a time. However, I think they've given us a great rate for two years, and I'm a little concerned with the bills going through the legislature and what they're going to do to our rate. So I think this will keep it the same for two years until we can figure out the real determination on the rate.
Will this coverage, if we're on discussion, I guess, you're done?
Yes.
Will this excess coverage provide any buffer for any anticipated or unanticipated costs coming down from legislature on work comp issues?
I believe so. I believe this is our premium, just adjusted by the number of employees that we have for the next two years. So whatever happens with legislature, this is our premium. Now, two years from now, if it's not good, we could see an increase pretty drastically. But this will hopefully hold it at bay for two years, and then we can see what happens.
Okay.
And I don't want, my concern is that the insurance companies are going to panic and increase the insurance next year after they see some extra claims come in, and then they'll, you know, reduce and will. So I'm hoping this will be a two-year buffer against the initial impact of this.
This is the excess carrier. Who's the primary carrier?
We're self-insured.
We're self-insured, yes, I'm sorry. The city is self-insured. This is just excess coverage.
So how much are we in for? Just so the public understands that we're paying how much, and then when does it kick in to the excess?
Brandon, I think, yeah.
See, I thought, we had him here for a reason.
We did, yes.
We didn't want him just to sit. That's right.
It's different for different classes, so I'm going to let Brandon take that.
Good morning. Mayor Crowe, Department of Supervisors, Staff, Brandon Lewis with USI Insurance Services. Pleasure to be here. For the excess workers' compensation, provides coverage excess of retention, since the city's self-insured. And the retentions are $2 million for sheriff, fire, and all presumptive liability claims, and $750,000 per occurrence for all other workers' comp claims. So to hopefully answer your question, the, you know, the cost to the city for the excess insurance is estimated at the $112,095 per year for the next two years. But the coverage provides, you know, coverage excess of those losses. So in the event of an employee injury or illness, it's covered under workers' comp. The city's responsible for the first $2 million if it's sheriff, fire, or presumptive, or the first $750,000 if it's another department, another employee that's injured.
Per occurrence or total for that group?
Per occurrence.
Wow. Wow.
So is there, is there an aggregate cap?
No, sir, there's not an aggregate cap under excess workers' compensation.
So if we had five claims, we'd be into it for $10 million.
Correct. Five, $2 million.
$2 million claims.
Yes. Yes, they are per occurrence, so if you have a number of firefighters injured in one occurrence, it would be $2 million for that occurrence.
Okay, so it is one occurrence, not per injury, not per employee.
Correct, per occurrence. So if you have, if you did have a big event.
Yeah, I got, I got that.
Correct, yes.
Everybody getting that on the record here?
Yeah, thanks.
Have we ever had to make a claim against the excess?
We have, yeah.
All right. Supervisor Barrett, and then Supervisor Bonkowski.
Well, as everyone knows by now, I've lived in other communities, and I've seen a lot of cities self-insure, and there's a reason for it. Could you just go over that for the public, that it's actually, you're sort of your own insurance company, and then you cover the excess through the insurance companies? Why is it profitable for us to do it this way?
Cecilia Meyer, Risk Management Coordinator for Carson City. Self-insurance allows us to control the claims rather than having an insurance company make all decisions. When you're in a premium-based program, if the insurance company makes a decision on a claim that the employer disagrees with, the employer actually has to appeal that decision and take it through the litigation process. Under self-insured, we have full control of the claims with the assistance of our third-party administrator. So premiums that would be paid in an insurance-based program, that premium doesn't ever come back to you. But in self-insurance, it's kind of a pay-as-you-go plan. So we pay the claims as their bills come in, and if there's lost time, we pay it at the time. We're not prepaying basically through a premium process.
Thank you, very succinct.
We do actually have a $3 million reserve in our workers' comp fund, as well as a large liability reserve in the workers' comp, to make sure that we can pay all of our current claims, as well as any unexpected claims coming up.
Brad Chilbitt.
She just stole my thunder.
Sorry. I anticipated the next question.
Any public comment on this issue? Everybody understand what's going on here? We ready for a motion? Somebody want to make a motion? Go.
Okay. I move to authorize staff to enter into an agreement for excess workers' compensation liability insurance services with Safety National Casualty Corporation for a total premium of $112,095 for fiscal year 2020, and an estimated total premium of $112,095 for fiscal year 2021.
There's a motion and a second on the motion. Discussion's in order.
In the motion, it says an estimated total premium of 112,95 for fiscal year 2021. I thought we just discussed that that would be the premium, and that's why we're locking it in on a two-year contract.
No, that is the premium per employee. So if we have more employees in different categories, it depends on the number of employees. It's not a not-to-exceed, because if we add employees, we added 11 employees in 2020.
So it's just an estimate.
It might go up a smidge, yeah.
Okay, all right.
Right, it'll, they'll true it up. It'll true it up.
The premium rate is guaranteed for two years, and they just apply the premium rate to the actual payroll of the city for each year. But guaranteeing the rate was our goal, to make sure that it wouldn't go up next year.
Everybody got that? Okay, we okay? Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Carried, okay. Excuse me. All right. Let's now take up discussion of possible action regarding proposed insurance agreements with, this is 15, Foxtrot, with Argonaut Insurance Company for excess liability coverage for general liability, auto liability, employment practices liability, law enforcement liability, management liability, and excess umbrella liability, for a total of $333,000. And the aggregate amount that we're asking for here is $359,35. You want to tell us what's going on here, how it relates to the employer?
So this is all of our liability insurance. Usually we bring PIP as well as this liability altogether as one insurance package. However, PIP was, our property insurer was not able to get the estimate, it'll come to the next board meeting. So this is just liability and all the...
So what's coming on next board meeting?
The property insurance.
Okay.
So, so this, this is all our liability insurance. If you want details on this, again, Brandon's here. We have a lot of different deductibles and, and coverage limits that I'll let, I'll let him talk about. But the difference here is if we go with Argonaut, which we are, we are recommending that we go with, they do not provide claims payment services where Travelers did. So we would have to hire CCMSI, a third-party administrator, to administer the claims. Now, even doing that, even hiring a third-party administrator and Argonaut, we're still saving almost $25,000.
Why is that? Why is that?
Because Travelers increased their premiums again by almost 7%, so.
Okay. All right. Brandon, why don't you, Supervisor Jomie, then we'll go. Brandon, you want to talk to us about the underlying insurance then, underlying what the self-insured stuff does when the limits kick in?
Sure, would you like just a brief review of what we have for?
Sure. So as Sheri mentioned, recommending Argonaut Insurance Company for your excess liability program, and very briefly, that, this carrier will provide 10 million limits, occurrence and aggregate for each coverage. For example, general liability, 10 million per occurrence, 10 million aggregate for the term. Law enforcement liability is a separate coverage with its own 10 million occurrence and aggregate limit. And so that includes all the listed coverage, general liability, auto, employment practices, law enforcement, and what we call management liability, or public officials' errors and omissions coverage. All of that coverage is subject to a 100,000 retention for occurrence that the city retains and is responsible for. And that's where, where Travelers provides claims administration services, Argonaut did not, but they provided a more competitive excess quote for the coverage. So that's when the city worked with its current work comp TPA for pricing on handling those liability claims. And that's the overview of the liability program. The other items in here are crime insurance with Great American, and we have a specific policy for pollution for the landfill as well.
The CCMSI contract will be coming on June 20th as well. I wanted to put the two contracts together for workers' comp and liability into the same contract, so that was delayed a little bit.
That was my one question, is where is the CCMSI contract? So the other, I mean, you kind of mentioned it on the second page, but like, now-practice insurance for our medical directors, is that in here for like, the fire department and for health and human services? Is that covered somewhere else?
That's a separate policy.
Okay. But that doesn't need to come to the board, because it's not aggregated with this, and it's a small amount? Is that a fair statement?
Yeah, there's small policies.
That's my understanding, yeah, those are separate placements throughout the year. Yeah. That have different renewal dates.
And lower amounts, probably.
They're much lower amounts, yeah.
Okay, thanks. Is there any, sorry, Brad. Is there any reason why aggregating them doesn't get us a benefit? I guess we must have looked into that. I'm trying to remember from when I was here, we tried to roll our malpractice insurance for our medical director, the fire department, into Travelers at the time, and I thought they accepted that, but now maybe we're having to separate that out. So I guess I'm wondering, is there not savings there to do that in aggregate?
Be happy to answer that. Again, Brandon Lewis, for the record, liability carriers like Travelers, Argonaut, and most liability carriers for public entities can provide limited professional services coverage. They'll limit that coverage to nurses. They can provide it, for example, the nurses at the health clinic are covered, but physicians and doctors are not covered by those forms. And so when we have medical directors for fire departments, as another example, it becomes necessary and practical to place those separately, and we place those with specialty medical malpractice carriers. So, yeah, we do that, and those generally are more primary policies, where the city doesn't have to take on $100,000 retention. There may be a very minor deductible in those. But it just isn't practical to build those into these programs, because the excess carriers don't cover the physicians and medical directors.
Okay, thanks, good explanation, appreciate it.
Brad?
Brendan, if I understood you correctly, the liability insurance through Argonaut has the same occurrence and aggregate limit at 10 million?
As with the current carrier, compared to Travelers, do you mean?
Just under the policy. So on the Argonaut policy, the per occurrence and the aggregate limits are the same at 10 million?
Correct, but they're provided separately for each coverage, which is a benefit over the current Travelers structure. The current carrier provides 1 million primary limits in general, with a 10 million aggregate umbrella over all of the coverage. So you could have a major employment practices claim impact the aggregate available to a general liability claim. Argonaut separates those, just think of them as different coverage towers. So you could have a potential, you know, 10 million claim for one type of coverage, and it wouldn't impact your other coverage.
Right, so I want to take that one step further. If we did have a catastrophic event, and it maximized the limit under the per occurrence, then what is our option as a city? Because now we have no coverage for the balance of the term under the aggregate.
If a catastrophic event reached the coverage aggregate limit, say, general liability, for example, in that case, we would immediately go out to the market to see if we could negotiate reinstating that aggregate, which generally would involve additional premium. But we would do that to ensure that the city had available coverage for the rest of the
Brandon or Cecilia question? If we change carriers from Travelers, does that affect any of the cases where Travelers is pursuing, is adjudicating or considering a claim?
Cecilia Meyer, Risk Management. All claims that are filed with a current carrier, such as Travelers, would be finalized by Travelers, and only claims occurring from July 1st forward would fall under the new carrier.
Claims occur, it's occurrence, okay.
Yes.
Let me ask another question. Does this excess, does this umbrella policy apply to the gun range operations?
Yes, there's no exclusion for that operation or location, so we have coverage applicable there.
And everybody's looked at the waiver of liability, and you're all comfortable with that, so we're not going to have a debate with the insurance company if something happens?
No, and we even had our internal consultants look at that waiver, you know, during the process, that that facility's been under review. So the underwriter didn't have any concerns specific to that location.
Very good. All right. All right. Anybody else out there?
Can I just compliment you guys? You ask amazing questions. Good job.
Shock, shock.
All right. Anybody else, public comment on this issue? Board, further discussion? Ready for a motion?
I move to direct staff to enter into insurance agreements with Argonaut Insurance Company for excess liability coverage at a total premium not to exceed $333,476 with Great American, and with Great American for government crime insurance, at a total premium not to exceed $13,150, and with Illinois Union for landfill pollution legal liability insurance at a total premium not to exceed $12,409, for a total aggregate of approximately $359,003.5 for FY 2020.
There's a motion and a second on the motion discussion. Hearing and seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Carried, okay.
Thank you very much, we appreciate the opportunity to work with the city.
Okay. We don't want to have any fights with any of those carriers now. You tell them just pay.
Yeah, just pay.
Just pay. All right, let's take up, Nancy, city manager, you ready to do this? You want to?
We're ready.
You ready? Let us know when you got your...
Do you want me to introduce it while you're doing that? Good morning, Melanie Bruketa, Carson City Human Resources Director. This item is for the board to conduct a public hearing of the performance of the city manager over the past fiscal year. You're being asked to rate her on her job performance of her daily job duties, and then provide an overall rating of her performance on the objectives that she's accomplished this past year. She was served with a notice of this meeting on May 23rd. We have provided you a draft performance review for your review, and she has also provided an update on the objectives, the status of the objectives that she was given last year, and she's prepared to move forward with that status now.
Okay. You ready?
All right, this is generally not the type of slide that I want to have up there. I like numbers more than words, but you couldn't really put this all into numbers, so. So anyway, I can't believe it's already been a year, and we're just telling the mayor yesterday, time flies when you're having fun. Must have been having a really good time. So I just want to thank the board again for giving me this opportunity. The last year's been an incredible experience for me. I also want to acknowledge my deputy, Adriana, and the department directors and the elected officials for their dedication to the city and everything that they've taught me over the last year. I truly couldn't have done it without all of their help, so. This last year's been an extremely busy year. I think the last few years have been really busy. So after 15 years, we're entering into a new franchise agreement for solid waste collection services. For the first time, we're offering residential single-stream recycling, green waste collection, as well as commercial recycling. We're working on a major software implementation that is replacing 30- to 40-year-old software. We saw the completion of the Curry Street project, and we jumped right into the initial stages of the South Carson Street, $20 million project. We're working on phase two of the water resource recovery facility, and we're also catching up with deferred maintenance. There was over $20 million in capital approved for the fiscal year 19 budget. And lastly, we've spent the last six months working on the 2019 legislative session. So I just wanted to start by going over some of the objectives that we've been working on over the last year, and I say we, because it definitely was a team effort. And so the first thing I wanted to talk about is starting with the city's budget. The fund balance in the general fund at the end of fiscal 19 is projected to be 13.7%. A portion of that fund balance is being used to fund capital and deferred maintenance for next fiscal year. That was 7.3 million. And we did that while still maintaining an ending fund balance of 8.8%. On financial and budget policies, in December, staff presented updated financial and budget policies to the board. That included increasing the policy for general fund reserve to a minimum of 8.3% with a goal of 16%. 16.7. We outlined the functions of the Internal Finance Committee, and we also outlined our capital improvement program funding. And, you know, and I just heard this recently, sometimes I hear people say the city's being too conservative. But these conservative policies that we put in place resulted in standard and pores upgrading the city's outlook from stable to positive in January of 2019. They base that on, and they really like the word "strong," strong fund balance levels, strong management with strong financial policies and practices, and strong budgetary performance. So that's great for the city.
We didn't get the upgrade, though.
We didn't get the upgrade, though.
We didn't get the tick up. We got the positives, the change.
I think we were too small in the city.
I'm just kidding, go ahead. It's a good deal to get the upgrade. I'm not downplaying that at all.
Well, to be recognized for our strong budgeting and financial policies. The next objective I have up there is engage collaborative teams, strengthen employee development, and establish the tone of the top. That's one of my favorite phrases. Shortly after my appointment, we held a leadership retreat for city directors that was designed to foster team building among the departments, provide leadership training, and strategic planning. In January, we reformatted the board retreat to facilitate the exchange of ideas between the board and the staff, just to get input and direction from the board on key issues and help us in developing our next year's budget. In line with our commitment for continuous improvement, we've just finished conducting an internal services survey, and that's to gain insight from departments... gain insight from departments and their employees that are using these internal, the services of these internal departments. That'll let us know what's working, what's not. They help provide suggestions or ideas for improvement. The internal service departments are made up of HR, IT, finance, purchasing, fleet and facilities maintenance. We're compiling the results of that right now and then I'll discuss that with the department directors. So lastly, I've been working to establish or really maintain the tone at the top because I think we already have a great tone at the top in leading by example and demonstrating a commitment to honesty, integrity and ethical behavior. I pride myself in listening, you know, taking a step back and looking at all sides of an issue and treating everyone fairly across the board. And of course, I'm not the only one that's doing that. We have a team of hardworking, dedicated directors and elected officials and you can see that reflected in the employees that they manage and that's the tone at the top. So that's great. Next is our new software implementation. This has been a tremendous undertaking for city staff. I really have to commend everyone that's been involved in this project. They have been working crazy long hours. I know that. I see them here at nine o'clock at night and, you know, that's in order to keep up with their day-to-day functions while implementing probably one of the largest software implementations the city's ever seen at one time. So just status on that, the Devonet project, that's the property tax and appraisal system. The Assessor is going to go live in July of 19 and the treasure is scheduled for November of 2019. The treasure is the property tax collection piece of that. The biggest project, the ERP replacement with Tyler Technology, phase one is financials. They're starting end user training next week. That will go on for three weeks with the scheduled go-live on July 1st. We planned it to be the beginning of the fiscal year. So we're going to close out this fiscal year in the old system and start new with the new fiscal year. So phase two is the community development. That includes the electronic plan submittal and that's scheduled to go live in October, November of 2019. Phase three is the human capital, the HR portion and payroll. That's scheduled to go live December 20th of 2019. That is to coincide so that the first paycheck of the calendar year 2020 is done in the new system. Phase four is the enterprise asset management. We've put that on hold. Staff is still, you know, with the things that were improved in the budget, we're still, you know, researching whether or not that program's going to be the one that we want to use for the asset management, that that best fits our needs for the asset management program. And the last phase is utility billing and that's estimated to go live February, March of 2020. Yeah, that's a lot.
Ambitious here.
Yeah. And yeah. So let's see. The next objective, we looked at looking at disposal of city-owned property and techno corrections to our lands bill. City staff developed an inventory of city-owned property that we feel is no longer needed for public purposes and can be disposed of for economic development or affordable housing. They brought that forward in January 2019. The board directed staff to start the process for disposal of eight parcels, which is approximately 4.4 acres. And you also approved for them to initiate due diligence to determine whether to convey a portion of property on Budai Way for affordable housing. And then on the lands bill, we're currently working with our federal lobbyists and Congressman Amade's office in Washington DC on technical corrections to our lands bill for congressional approval.
Excuse me. Tell me again where we are on the potential site for affordable housing there on Budai. Where are we in the status of that?
I might have to ask Darren to answer. I know they were starting the due diligence process.
Good morning. Darren Schultz, Public Works Director. We're in the process of putting together the RFP and that RFP will be brought before this board for approval before it goes out. I would expect that in the next two months.
Thanks. Sorry to interrupt you there. Go.
All right. Next on to pavement management and street maintenance. We amended the plan of expenditure for the VNT infrastructure tax and that's to allow the city to use almost 1,800,000 of accumulated reserves for the Roop Street and Clearview Drive projects and approximately 390,000 is available annually to fund projects in accordance with the pavement management plan. The new waste management franchise agreement that's effective July 1st, that includes a 3% franchise fee to address roadway impacts. We think that will probably be approximately 305,000 annually. And lastly, the 2019 legislature, we worked with our state lobbyists and NACO and testified in support based on board direction for SB48 and that gives us the ability to impose an additional tax on diesel fuel. And that's only if it's approved by a two-thirds majority of the board or by a majority of the voters in a general election. And that was determined that it would bring in approximately 400,000 for roads.
Is that a year or two years?
For a year. Next, on the agenda process, we're working with the DA's office to develop policies and procedures and provide training in the process of developing agenda items. Our assistant DA, Dan, performed a short training for the department directors and elected officials and my office is working on updating the policies and procedures that departments can use as a guide that illustrates best practices, compliance with the open meeting law and defining fiscal impacts for the items. And because the objective is always to provide complete and accurate information to the board as well as the public. Rifle and pistol range. When safety concerns were brought to the city's attention, we implemented reduced hours at the range and we contracted for two range safety assessments. We implemented the range task force to seek the community's help in developing a plan to reopen the facility while still ensuring the safety of our employees at the landfill and the public. Final design is almost complete for the shooting bays and those improvements should begin in June, July of 2019.
Of when?
This year.
Currently.
So is this month or next month? Yeah, gen nodding. The next objective is manage and oversee the compliance with the 1/8% sales tax. That's been an ongoing objective just due to the many projects that are contained in that plan of expenditure. South Carson Street is at 60% design with construction to begin in early 2020. We submitted a fiscal 20 appropriations request to our US senators and representatives requesting federal funding of 6 million to be matched by the city's contribution of 6 million from this 1/8% sales tax. We followed this up by actually going to meet with them in Washington DC last month to discuss the proposal highlighting the many benefits of the project and this includes the update of aging infrastructure, safety improvements and the beautification of the capital city's eastern corridor. And in addition to that, we're working with our lobbyists and Congressman Amade's office to hopefully obtain a right-of-way so that we have the ability to extend Stewart Street through to Curry Street. Then the next objective is the motel task force. The board was provided with an update on those activities in February of 2019. They're continuing to inspect properties. The owner is provided with the outcome of the inspection and the code violations that were noted. And if the violations are not corrected, then the case is turned over to the DA's office to initiate action through the legal process. And during the year, they completed four inspections and issued two citations that were resolved through the courts. Provide the board updates on the status of city projects, the 2019 legislative session and keeping the board informed of important issues and include board members and policy decisions. We provided legislative updates to the board at each board supervisor meeting during the session. And I've kept, and we've brought several proposed senate and assembly bills to the board for a vote of whether we were in support, neutral or we were opposed. I kept the board informed of important city issues and projects at our bi-weekly meetings and sought input on any policy decisions. I've also presented the monthly lately with everything that was going on. Sometimes it was bi-monthly, the city manager update to inform the board and the public of city events happening, community development activity happening around the city, internal finance committee activities and various other department projects. Next, negotiate a new solid waste collection services franchise agreement. Five proposals were received with staff recommending moving forward with waste management. In December of 18, a 15-year franchise agreement was approved by the board and currently we're having bi-weekly franchise rollout status meetings with waste management in preparation of the July 1st implementation of the new agreement. And lastly, expanding the partnership with the Carson City Culture and Tourism Authority. The CTA director is now attending our monthly city update meetings. It includes elected official departments and department directors. We're working on an amendment to the CTA agreement that will be coming on the next meeting. That was to update or to provide for trails coordination services with the recent board approval of a new trails coordinator position for fiscal 20 and adding language to give the city the ability to charge event organizers for their facility use, equipment and other services provided by the city. And in addition, we're working with them to review and update room tax collection policies and looking into the 28-day exemption. And that's all I had for the status on the current year objectives.
Any questions? We'll talk about the things. Any questions we've got for Nancy at this juncture? So where are you on Marlet?
I think we're close. I just saw an email from the DA's office yesterday that their director is going to be in contact with our DA's office and we're working out the terms of the agreement.
Okay.
I'm not sure when that will come back.
All right. Go ahead.
So I've just listed some of the objectives and priorities for the next performance period and these are just suggestions. The board can revise them if you wanted to put them in a priority order. The first one is to maintain compliance with the 20 budget and develop the fiscal 21 budget, finish the IT software implementation, develop the fiscal year 21 through 25 strategic plan, work with the DA's office on the revision of the municipal code, begin the process of performing the master plan update, begin the process of creating the South Carson Street neighborhood improvement district like we did in the downtown area and review the base budget methodology to identify efficiencies and accurately reflect the needs of the department and other city offices, perform a thorough review and update of the policies and policy tech, work with Socrata to design and update the city's performance dashboard, complete a downtown parking study and look at the feasibility of expanding the BLS ambulance program. So we want any discussion on, yeah.
And open the rifle range. I think we should put it in the document to keep it out there that we're going to be pushing to open the range. Can I ask another question?
Sure, jump in.
So on the, when you're working on developing the strategic plan, does that include trying to deal with the need potentially for a fire station or the new backup emergency thing? Is that included within what you consider the strategic plan is going to include any capital long-term needs?
Yes, I think that will all come together.
I just want to make sure we're on the same page.
Brad, jump in.
On item five, begin the process of performing a master plan update. I'd like to see this come back to the board before we get started on this for a full discussion because I don't believe that we need a full master plan update. I think probably 80% of it is fine, but there may be members on the board here that disagree with me, so I'd like to have a full discussion about that because it affects the time that it takes to go through the process and also the cost.
I'll weigh in on that one, too. Actually, I agree with Brad. He and I previously had bones of contention regarding whether we needed this or not, but I do agree with him. I think we got a good master plan. We just need to do a good look at it. Okay. Stacy, you got the other item?
Yeah. Couple of things. I, you know, the policy tech thing, you know, I could take that or leave that. I mean, I think that's something you guys can do internally. It's just my opinion. I think, I know we're in the process of doing it, but I think Marlet should be up there. It's a big deal. I don't think we should minimize that. And, you know, we're a month away from starting the new fiscal year and I don't know that it's going to be addressed in the next month, so I would like to see that on there. And I know the city's tried this before, but with a new administration at the governor's office, I'd really like to see something on here about taking that state piece of land that's sitting there at South Carson Street and doing something other than it being a pile of dirt and weeds. I'd personally like to see that on here with the full understanding that I know you can't accomplish a lot, but I'd like to see you try. Maybe with the mayor's help in this current administration, we can, you know, move a little farther down the path. So I'd like to see that. And one other item, and I don't know where this is going to fall either, but I think it needs to be discussed, and that's the 28-day exemption for motels. I'd like to see that added to this list and accomplished in the next year. Again, I don't know where I personally fall with that, but I think we need to have a discussion at the board level because there's a lot revolving around that. Sorry, my mic hasn't been on the whole time. You're not going to make me repeat all that, are you?
Got it. We're getting it.
Okay, good. Thanks. Sorry.
Good idea.
Okay, I think that's probably enough. Sorry, Nancy.
Brad, go.
Yeah, I'd just like to expand on Stacey's comments. It's not just the National Guard property for state lands. It's also the old, what was it, the Advocates property that's all boarded up and all of the land that they have for the state mall. We need, you know, we, Bob and I had conversations with the state several years back about that and it'd be nice to get an update on both of those properties as well. And then on number nine, to redesign, update the city's performance dashboard. You know, this one kind of troubles me because in the seven years that I've been here, this will be our third try at trying to come up with a dashboard that works and is usable. So maybe we need an internal work group to decide what the goals are before we just try to go spend a bunch of money and come up with a product again because obviously something is falling between the cracks here now that this is, again, the third time that we've tried to come up with something in just the last seven years.
It will be with the same company that we've already purchased the software through and they just have updates and ways that we can, you know, present the information differently. So, but it would be good to have a working group to.
Well, the two issues that I've seen are correlating the output to what is actually needed to our reality for governance and getting full utilage from. needed to our reality for governance and getting full utilage from the departments so that the data is input. That seems to be the two areas where we've struggled, so we need to address those and not just, you know, implement upgrades.
Good point. Suozber, John, sorry.
Thank you. I want to throw in my agreement with Stacy and Brad regarding state lands. We could, I, I, it's a new administration, let's try to take runs at it. I'm particularly concerned about the orphanage or whatever we call it down here. It's right in the heart of our downtown almost. Secondly, I, I want to commend you, going back to your previous presentation, you've been very good about trying to find money for roads, and we've been good by, you know, supporting 48, SB 48. But keep looking. I just put this on, on the list of things because that's one of the things. I'm glad to see the match plan in here, and I want to add that, you know, and I'm glad you're going to Washington looking for money to add to what we get. We can always use that because that's where the pot is. Not the kind of pot where you've been talking about.
The money. That's where the green is.
I'm glad you clarified that. By the way, for those who don't know, the, the pot lounge bill that was out there by Senator Atkinson and then picked up later in the governor's cannabis board legislation has been amended to say that local government cannot or precluded from putting a pot lounge in, period. So it's not even an option anymore.
Say that again?
No lounges.
You can't, local government has no authority to put a lounge in, so I mean, you're absolutely precluded right now. It's not necessarily, it's not an option. I mean, the cannabis board, I guess, at some point in time could recommend legislation, but for the next two years under, under this current legislation, there will be no pot lounges, even discussed.
Do we, I guess I'm just asking this question. Do we want to put, we know we've got in the budget for a South Car, I don't see Lucia here. We don't have, we have in the budget for a South Carson Street traffic flow study, and I know we've had some discussion about the development, and Brad has a concern about this, and I think a, a lot of us share that, with that area up behind Save Mart and traffic flow in there. Is that a goal that we should ask Nancy to put on this, or do we feel that it's sufficiently covered by, by Public Works?
I think it's in the traffic.
Okay. Because it is funded, so.
Okay. Suozber.
So maybe I'll just kind of make a general comment that I've had a lot of discussions with Nancy over this last year, and I really see that all of the issues dovetail one another. And so your budget drives a decision, and that we really look to make sure that everything that's in a strategic plan and every decision we're making is driving us to where we want to go. And so I think these all really fit complementary to one another, but that when you're working on them, Nancy, that, that's what you're ultimately thinking before you put something in a strategic plan or something there, that you're really marrying it up. Because it's not great to put something in a plan that you know there's absolutely no budgetary methodology to achieve it. And so just, just that you marry these together as best as you can, and that, and then I think it'll help staff and us and everyone that we're all driving where we're going over the next five years. So, good luck with that, but I really think these all, they all fit together to give the message of what the city is trying to achieve, so.
Stacy. John, do you, do you like your light on, John?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay. All right. Nancy, want to go, continue?
That's, that's all I had.
Public comment before we go to board? Public comment? Public comment? Anybody? No department heads can speak.
The other public?
The other, the other public. All right. I don't see any. Board, you know, Nancy, I have a question for you, and it's kind of maybe an odd question, but you've been doing this for a year. What do you think your positives and negatives are, or how do you, how do you feel on the job? I mean, just give you, you know, do you think you're working out? I mean, how do you feel about it?
I put her on the spot.
I think I'm working out great.
Yeah. Have you seen anything where, you know, from, from a, from a management standpoint, from the city manager's position, are there any areas where you feel that should be addressed or that maybe are uncomfortable or something like that? I mean, I know it's catching you off guard here, but.
That's okay.
Just like this.
Just for, as far as improvement, you know, that I think that, that I can make is definitely delegating more. This, this is a new position for me, so I, I kind of want to see everything and take everything in. A big example of that was I was going to try to read every bill of the legislative session, and, you know, there's just not enough time in the day. So that was directed over for Adriana to take the lead on that, so delegating a little bit more. But once again, it's hard because I want, I want to learn as much as I can, so. I could probably work on making sure that the board's getting information in a timely manner, making sure that, that you guys are up to date on any critical issues so you hear it from me before you hear it, you know, out in the public at Costco or somewhere. I'd like to have more time to meet with the directors on a one-on-one basis, do that more often, and just so I'm keeping up with what their needs are. And I think what's, what's really worked was dividing out the, the responsibilities for the departments between Adriana and I, just so that we can get back to the directors, you know, on questions, because, because usually it's something that needs to, you know, get answered right, right away, and so the fact that with us splitting up that workload has helped quite a bit, so.
All right. You know, I just talked to, somebody just talked to me yesterday, I think, or day before that about, you know, they, they feel very good about the, I mean, citizens were dashing about it, that, you know, when they, when they have a concern or they raise a concern with city manager, the deputy city manager, they're getting an answer fairly, they're getting a prompt answer back. And I think, you know, that's part of what we try to do is, you know, we'll try and answer everybody, I mean, just like we direct our staff to do, we're going to answer all these questions within, you know, one way or another, there'll be an answer to somebody who's got a concern within, hopefully, a day. So that, you know, and I know you're trying to do that, and I know Adriana does the same thing, but from, from what I've heard on the outside, you're doing a pretty good job at doing that, so. All right. Anybody else? Want to do?
John can go first.
John?
Go ahead, man.
I'll go first. I don't mind going first. You know, I, I evaluate Nancy pretty regularly during our monthly meetings, so she knows exactly what I think about her. I don't really like doing this in public, which I've said before, so I'm going to keep this brief. I think that the foundation of any good job performance are three key items: honesty, being ethical, and working hard. And you possess all three of those. When we hired you, we knew that you didn't have city manager experience specifically. I think that you've done a very good job of learning on the job, which is what at least my expectation was. You're actually a little farther along than I thought you would be by this point, so I'm pleased with that. Two items that I would request from you going forward: more of a public presence, your cheerleader role for Carson City, and then just continuing to learn on the job so that you gain experience in all aspects of the job. Obviously, you have the financial part down solid, but there's a lot more to it. There's still a lot more opportunities to learn, so I'm going to rate you above expectations.
John?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Nancy and I have discussed these things, too, on occasion, and, and I'm going to get into a real gray area here. The, I think you're doing a fine job, but I, I do think that I want to say that the role of leadership over a organization in which you were a member previously, and I think everybody up here has experienced this, is very tricky. Being, being a leader of a 600-staff FDE, we'll call it that, it's more than that in reality because we have part-timers, is very difficult after having been a member of that staff. We hire you, and you sort of hire everybody else. That's pretty good in two simple terms. So I rate you very highly on your progress, too, as Brad has, but I think that the indefinable thing is the leadership question. I think you're doing a fine job, but distinguishing yourself as the person who's the boss is difficult, so I, I urge you to work on that because I guess I'm saying, I want you to be tougher but nice about it. You're pretty nice about everything, and I think you're pretty tough, but that's my only advice to you, and I rate you highly.
Stacy?
I have a unique working relationship with Nancy because we were peers at one time, and so it's been, and, and this side of things is a new experience for me, as is it for you, too. So overall, I'm, I'm pleased with your performance. I have a couple of the same comments. I, I think seeing you in the public or having our citizens and our sort of communities as a, as a broad definition, seeing you within the community as the cheerleader and the leader of our city is important, and I'd like to see that happen. And that, that tags onto what Brad said. And to what John said, I, I also agree with strengthening your leadership component. And again, that doesn't mean heavy-handed. I think we all learn how to be leaders in different ways, and I've always appreciated the kind of leader that demonstrates competence and compassion, and I think you have those two things. So on my rating system, and I developed my own little rating system based on your strategic objectives for last year, I also have you above expectations.
Anybody? Anybody else want to weigh in? Go, if you want. You don't have to go if you want.
Well, I don't want to sound, I'm not a wet blanket, because I, I talk to Nancy just about every two weeks. I think what Brad said earlier is more accurate, that I don't come to a once-a-year answer to tell you the job that I think you're doing. I do that every two weeks when we communicate. So what I really like that Nancy's brought to the table is that she's very receptive to comments. She, she takes it well, you know, and so I really appreciate that about you because I think that, for me, it's having the city manager as a member of our team, right? We're setting goals and objectives and looking for you to carry it out. So I really appreciate that you meet with me every few weeks and we kind of work together to say what's going well, what's not going well, how are we hitting the mark, not hitting the mark, and, and that you're always progressing and then working with your team, like you said, to help push, push our goals forward. So I really like that method that we have and the communication, and I really appreciate that about you, so I want to just put it on the record. As far as deciding whether you're a meet expectation or an above expectation, that's a little harder because we don't have objective standards that say, if you hit this mark, you're that, if you hit this, you're that. So it's a little more difficult for me to say you meet or you're above it. For me, you meet. You're exact, you kind of fit the original comment I made when we hired you, that you were the right person at the right time to do the right job, and I think you're doing the right job. And so I can live with either direction we want to go to, but you're meeting my expectations. Thank you.
You know, one of the things I've heard is that you would share your pretty tough in your finance. And I'm here to tell you, that's what you're there for. And, you know, Nancy, I, I think that, you know, from, from my perspective, I've talked to you about it, you know, you need to be out in public a little bit more, and I know, you know, it's, it's hard to do that, it's while you're learning to do all these things, and it's really hard when you've got the legislative session going on and you're going, you know, you're going 90 miles an hour trying to figure out, you know, when the next hammer's going to fall, shoe's going to fall, or whatever that saying is. But, you know, I, I, too, believe that your, 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 your performance has been above expectation, and I fully expect that, you know, next year you're going to get an outstanding because, you know, leader is, is, I think you've heard up here, you know, leadership, you know, does start at the top, and I understand that. It is particularly comforting, you know, to me that, you know, leadership is something that you kind of learn over time, but it's, it's, it is comforting to know that we've got people looking over the financial, the dollars that are involved in the city. I think, you know, we'd sometimes talk about all the things that are going on, which is important to talk about, but at the end of the day, I sleep at night by knowing that, you know, we're doing the right thing with taxpayer, taxpayer money, and that's where I think you shine. And, you know, other than a few things, I think that you're going to be outstanding, and so, you know, my hat's off to you for, you know, taking the time to, you know, to learn. I think, you know, from what I hear from your troops, they think you're doing a fine job. They didn't pay me anything for that. But I hear, but I hear that because I do ask, you know, privately I ask, and I think, you know, that, you know, so you do have the, I think you've got the, the, the support of your, of your, call it for lack of a better word, your cabinet, and that's good because you need, you need to have that. And a truly functioning organization is, you and I know, leaders take the slings and arrows from the things that go bad, and they give, when things go good, they give the credit to their troops. I mean, it doesn't always work out that way, but as a, as a fundamental of leadership, that's where I think we should be going in, in terms of, you know, we're not here to make a name for ourselves, and that includes the city manager. We're, we're here to see the things that work well, and when they work well, we want our troops to know it. When they work bad, we'll take it up ourselves because the blame tone starts at the top, and blame starts at the top, okay? So that's my two cents. I look forward to an outstanding next year, and I look, I really enjoy working with you all the time. I mean, I'm spending a whole lot of time down there for, because of other things, but during legislative session, I've done it a lot. And I know, you know, this particular time was hard. There are a lot of bills that were coming around that, you know, we're going to have to deal with, to deal with money, and we'll see how, see how that goes, but I'm really comfortable, you know, that with the team we've got in place, we'll be able to maneuver those things as best we can and go forward. So, you know, my hat's off to you. Well done for a year, and let's, I think it's going to do nothing but go up, and I tend to agree with what Brad said, you know, you're learning, and you're learning well, and that's what we can expect, and so I think what I expected when we, when we hired you, so. And Mel, I don't know, I think we just, we have a vote now, I don't know, on the expectations for the, for the coming year? We want to do that? Because we, there are some things we need to add. Did you get those, Nancy?
I wrote them all down, and what I plan to do is incorporate all these comments into a final review and have you sign it.
Okay.
If you're comfortable, if the rest of the board is comfortable with that.
Well, I think we need to see it all. They need to see what the review is.
I'll send it out, and if you have any comments, you can provide them back to me individually, and once I have everything finalized, I'll give it to the mayor to approve if you guys make a vote today.
So do we need a vote today, then?
I'd ask that you vote today, yes.
On?
On establishing the rating that you're giving her on both the major job responsibilities and the objectives.
Let's give her a try, see where we go.
All right, I'll try it. I move to establish the rating of the city manager's major job responsibilities as above expectations, and to establish your overall performance rating based on the performance of the major job responsibilities and the accomplished objectives as above expectations, and to adopt the performance objectives for fiscal year 2020 as presented in the agenda material and with the items added by the board members at this meeting, and further to authorize the mayor to sign the evaluation when completed by Human Resources.
Second.
There's a motion and a second on the motion. Discussion? Okay. I don't see, discussion's in order.
Just to clarify, because it wasn't included in the motion, the mayor has, has authorization, authorization to sign it after it has been.
to sign it after it has been circulated amongst us, and we've had a chance to provide comments.
Correct, yes, and my intention, thank you.
Good to be king, but not that good. Okay, all right. Anybody, any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posnay? Carried. Well done, Nancy. Okay.
You can breathe again.
You can breathe. Yeah, come on, worry.
And thank you, thank you for crediting your deputy city manager because you divide things up, finance lawyer, et cetera. It's really, I think, a good team.
And all the troops.
Certainly.
And I just want to thank you all for your guidance and for having the trust in me
to be able to have this, to, you know, take on this position, so thank you.
All right. Very good. Okay, we're going to do some, I think we're done with the board of supervisors except for the non-action items, and also, we're going to have a meeting with the lawyer, I think, to talk about pending things, legal things. So, we'll do that right after we do non-action items for the board. Nancy, you want to talk about, you ready to talk about legislative things, or you've talked enough?
Yeah, we're kind of glad that it's over, but I actually wasn't going to do anything today because Mary Walker, our lobbyist, is going to be here at the next meeting to go over the legislative session, and we'll also have Wes from the League of Cities is going to do a presentation. So, I wasn't sure how long this meeting was going to go, so.
Okay, good. All right. Anything, board supervisors? Anything? Go.
Our commercial real estate office has completed the 2019 vacancy study for Carson City. This is our fourth report since 2009, and I just wanted to give everybody an idea of what the local economy is like. And the commercial market is broken out into office, retail, industrial, and then multifamily. So, in the office market, the current vacancy rate is 8.1%, down from a high of 17.8% in 2011. And in the submarket of medical office vacancy, it's 4.1%. So, the medical office market is very tight, and there's actually not enough space. In the retail market, that's the one area of the economy in Carson that has not really taken off yet. The vacancy rate is 16.9%, which is the same as it was in 2015, down from 19.8% in 2009, which was the height of the vacancy. But if you exclude the Kmart building, then the vacancy rate's 9.9%. So, the Kmart building alone represents 7% of the total retail space in Carson City.
Because of the size.
Because of the square footage. It's all based on square footage. Industrial, this is where we're also struggling. The industrial vacancy rate's 5.2%. A healthy market is 7% to 8%. So, we don't have enough space, industrial space. Generally, when you run out of space, that means you have speculative development, and builders and developers will come in and build space. Right now, the cost of construction is preventing that from happening, so when companies look here for industrial space and there's no available space, they just move on. We're just losing them altogether. They're choosing not to relocate here.
Run those numbers by me again on industrial.
5.2% is the vacancy today. A healthy market is 7% to 8%, and that's down from 2009. The vacancy rate was 21.5%. We're now at 5.2%. So, we could use a lot more space out there. And it's interesting because we had a meeting, Lucia and I had a meeting with some members of the public yesterday or the day before, and one of their comments at that time was, they were talking about all the empty buildings in Carson City, and I'm like, what are you talking about? There's very few empty buildings in Carson City, but, so it's interesting to see that the public perception is that we have a lot of vacancy, and the facts are that we have historic lows in industrial and in multifamily. In multifamily, the vacancy rate's 1.5%, 1.5. In Reno, it's about 3.6%. A healthy market is about 5% vacancy. So, obviously, we have several apartment complexes that are currently under construction, and when they come online, that will alleviate this. But right now, as we all know, if you're trying to find a place to live here in Carson City, it's just, it doesn't exist. Basically, the only vacancy, that 1.5%, is the monthly rollover for move-outs and move-ins. So, if you don't know somebody and get on a list, you can't find a place to live here. So, I just wanted to put those numbers out there. The vacancy study is available. We have a link for it, and we have a few of the hard copy books here, and I think from this point on, we're probably going to start doing this annually so we can track it a little better. But the overall numbers show that most of the commercial market in Carson City is at historic low vacancies, the exception to that being the retail.
Can I keep this? Thank you. All right. Any other board comments? Stacy?
Yeah, I just wanted to give you a quick update on CTA. We, you heard Nancy mention that we're, they're bringing a new agreement back. It got reviewed by CTA. There were some changes that I think, in conversations with Nancy and Dave, that I'm recommending relative to reporting by Arts and Culture Department of the city back to CTA. And so, I think if the board approves it, it may have to go back to CTA to get approved there as well, but that should be coming forward fairly soon. There's also been a discount policy for hotels here in Carson, a 2% prepaid discount, that we're working with the DA's office to, we don't believe there's statute, statute, we don't believe there's statutory authority to even do that. So, we're working with Ben and Dan, and over the next one or two board meetings with CTA should eliminate that. How that looks, I don't know if that has to come to the board of supervisors, waiting on Dan and Ben to work on that, or if we can just take care of it at CTA, but I just want to let you know. And then, I think we're going to start working on the 28-day component, at least at that level, to make a recommendation and then bring it, excuse me, and then bring it to the board to have some discussion here. So, that's the update there.
Anybody else? Got anything? Just a couple of things to mention. One, you know, we talked about the community support grants, and I'd just like to say, you know, we have a whole lot of volunteers in this community that really help this, help Carson City develop a sense of pride, a sense of place, and a sense, and, you know, without which I don't know that we would be in the same place in Carson. I mean, they take a huge load off of the government services that we'd always, that we'd otherwise perhaps have to deal with. And I think, you know, our volunteer community in Carson City deserves a pat on the back. And I, you know, what brought that to my attention was this last Saturday, I went to three events, starting at 8 o'clock in the morning with, it was National Trails Day. Muscle Power and other citizens are up building a new trail to the ham property that we just acquired. You know, that was going on, and later in the morning, pets of the homeless and fish were working together to take care of dogs and cats of those who couldn't otherwise afford those services. They give, and Cassie was handing out free spare neuter vouchers, and that lasted about, I don't know how many dogs and cats they took, but you know, that's another one where we're helping folks who couldn't otherwise pay for it, but who love their animals. That's, you know, and that's a big deal in Carson City. Everybody, it's just a big deal in Carson City. And then that night, we went, I think, I don't know, probably, I think all of us were at the Fish Celebrity Waiters Dinner, where we're raising money for Fish. You know, and those are just, you know, that takes care of a lot of underprivileged folks, including homeless. And, you know, our churches, when I speak about homeless, our churches in this community stood up during the last winter to provide nighttime shelter for the homeless so they didn't have to go to Fuji. You know, those things really help. We have problems with affordable housing, we have problems with homeless issues, but, you know, without the volunteer base that we have in this community, we'd be worse off, let me just say it like that. And on the, on the things we might, you might want to consider going to, NACO, the National Association of Counties, is having their annual conference in Las Vegas on July 12th. You're all invited to go. It's a national one. That has been picked, it's in Las Vegas. If you want to go, talk with Rachel, and she'll sign you up for that. That's in July. And then, if you want to go to the League of Cities one, I usually don't go to those, but since I'm president, I have to go to this one. That's in San Antonio in September sometime, so I'll go to that, and anybody else who wants to go is welcome to go to that as well. And the last thing I have to say is, it's nice to have the legislature come here, put all their money in here and everything. It's also nice to take a breath. And, you know, I want to say thanks to the folks who, you know, who kept track of all the bills. You know, I don't know that we asked this when we were talking to Nancy or Adriana on this one, you know, but it seemed like, you know, there was just a whole lot going down, but it seemed like it worked pretty well. But we maybe ought to have a debrief to see, you know, if there's any tweaks we need to make to the manner in which we address these bills. But other than that, you know, it was, from a process, from a procedure standpoint, it seemed to work pretty well. Those are my items to bring up. Anybody else have anything? And I think, Dan?
Tomorrow is bee?
Huh?
It's tomorrow, are we doing the bee habitat?
Oh, tomorrow we're doing the bee habitat.
At 10?
10 o'clock tomorrow. Yeah, forgot about.
Welcome more bees to our community.
Yeah. And by the way, if everybody says, "I got bit by a bee," I learned this. If you get, if somebody says, "I got bit by a bee," that's probably not true. And I looked at it, and I said, "Come on, man, bees bite." But the drone bees that go out and collect pollen don't have stingers. If you got bit by a bee, it's either maybe a bumblebee or an African bee or something we don't have here, I don't think, or wasp or something like that. But the honeybees, the drones don't bite. The females have a stinger, but they stay in the hive and take care of the queen during the day when the drone, the male drones are out collecting what they do. Tomorrow, 10 o'clock, I'm told that there's going to be a lot of people there. You might want to be there early.
A lot of bees.
A lot of bees there.
There'll be a lot of bees too, you know? All right.
The non-stinging ones.
So, Dan, I think we don't have any more for the board, so I think I'm going to adjourn the board with a notice that, you know, we're going to stay in closed session here to talk with the lawyers. I think that's...
No, you can't adjourn us. We have to reconvene.
I think what we want to do, you're right.
Recession.
Yeah, I got to recess. So, we'll be in recess, we'll be in recess until the conclusion of the redevelopment authority. Okay? Yeah, I forgot that we have to authorize what, you know, since we're the same board.
I know, we can't do it at the same time.
But it is what it is. All right, so we're going to be in recess until the call of the chair this afternoon at the conclusion of redevelopment, and we're going to be in closed session now to talk with our lawyers about pending legal matters.